Good morning Wichita, good morning to all of you, welcome to City Hall. We'll call this meeting to order. With us this morning is Pastor Donna Goldtree of St. Paul's United Methodist Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and we ask that you please stand for both.
Please join me in a time of meditation. Almighty, we give thanks. Thanks for the gentle rain falling early this morning that prepares us for the winter ahead of us. Thanks for the warm fall days that make our hearts sing. They just sing with joy. We give thanks for the people who are in this room and the many in all the buildings and places where Wichita's employees do their jobs, who are dedicating their lives to leading and working to carry out the city's mission to be a place where life unfolds for the better. We give thanks for the citizens who are here today. We give thanks for the dedication of our leaders here for remembering those for whom life is hard and to have a passion to put in place ways forward for those who find life hard. We are blessed to be in a city where the people, leaders and residents alike, recognize the beauty and value of all of our residents, rich and poor alike. Today, as this council begins its daily deliberations, we pray for guidance that actions taken reflect the often spoken desire to make this city the best place it can be, providing a good place to work, live, play, and a place to give thanks for all residents, rich and poor. So, may the council begin the day with a heart for creating a place full of justice, opportunity, and peace. May the needs of the many be balanced and affirmed in the deliberations taken today. So be it. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Goldtree. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting, September 23rd, 2025.
Councilmembers, any items to be edited? I see none. I move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting for September 23rd, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and Proclamations. Today's proclamations are National Arts and Humanities Month, Walktober, Family Promise Week 2025, and Fire Prevention Week.
May I please ask the representatives for City Arts and Councilmember Tuttle and Councilmember Glascock, who serves on the Wichita Art Museum Board?
Good morning Shay.
Good.
Good morning.
Thank you all very much for attending this morning's City Council meeting. I will read the proclamation. The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas public support for the arts at all levels in the United States has enriched American civilization, fostering unity and strengthening the nation through diverse cultural expression and increasing engagement by citizens as creators, performers, and audience members. Whereas this support recognizes and encourages the growing number of Americans contributing to the flourishing cultural sector, giving voice to collective identity and sharing artistic gifts with people of all ages. Whereas institutions that promote and provide access to artistic work strengthen civic engagement, foster understanding across cultures, and inspire a shared vision for the future. Adding $185 million to Wichita's economy, $1.4 billion statewide, and $151 billion nationwide. Whereas the city of Wichita is committed to equitable access to cultural arts opportunities, activating and strengthening the creative potential of the community so that artistic expression thrives and cultural heritage is preserved and celebrated. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as National Arts and Humanities Month.
Thank you Mayor and City Council for recognizing Arts and Humanities Month here in Wichita and across the nation. My name is Lindsay Pinaka and it's my honor to serve as the city's Director of Arts and Cultural Services and I get to work with all these wonderful, beautiful people behind me who represent different museums, arts organizations, the nonprofit sector, the for-profit sector, individual artists and just arts enthusiasts from across the community. And we're celebrating not just here in Wichita but across the country, our cultural core as a community. As the mayor mentioned in the proclamation, the arts are a major business player here in Wichita, representing about 3,000 full-time equivalent jobs. That's about as many full-time positions as we have with the city of Wichita that are represented across the arts sector. There are over eighty nonprofit arts and culture organizations in Wichita and countless for-profit small businesses and independent entrepreneurs who also call Wichita home. But the arts are so much more than business, as we all know. Arts and humanities is a mirror of our community. The sector reflects what makes our community unique, it's what makes our community beautiful. The arts and humanities offer safe places for us to present and share ideas and they make us critically think about what makes us different and what makes us the same. And they really share our collective community. This month, there, October alone, there are 161 arts and humanities-related events happening in Wichita. And this is not unique to October. Every month, there are hundreds of opportunities in the community, from film screenings to exhibit openings, to dance and theatrical performance, to musical concerts, you name it, we've got it here in Wichita. To learn more about the arts and culture sector in Wichita, I encourage everyone to visit wichita.gov/arts where you can find out what the city does, but also encourage everyone to check out our partner organization, The Shout, at shoutwichita.com and check out their events calendar in particular, that's something that the city's really supportive of because it's where you can find everything that's happening in the local arts community. And again, there are 161 unique events in October alone. So be sure to check out that community calendar. I also want to encourage everyone to attend our monthly Arts Mixer. This is a series that pops up every month in a unique arts and culture space in the community. It's free, it's informal, it's just an excuse to get out and see a space that you might not have been to before. This month, we're meeting on October 9th, this Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at one of Wichita's newest art spaces, Maven Art Gallery at 3238 East Douglas. So with that, thank you again for the recognition, thank you to everyone behind me who does all the work in the community, and thank you to the Wichita community for supporting such a vibrant arts and culture sector. Thank you.
How are you doing?
One, two, three. One, two, three. Can you do one?
Yes.
Well, she had a rock the other day. She's here? I don't know if she's here, but she's at least in the back. She might be, she's banged up, she's presenting the drive alone here. Yeah, yeah. She might be near the, if you go to the council. All right, thanks dear, good to see you.
While our guests exit, I'm just gonna make mention that Nomar Fiesta celebrated the Hispanic and Latino culture this past Saturday. And down in South Wichita, we had the Vietnamese Fall Festival celebrating the rich culture of the Vietnamese community. So again, they were also celebrating arts and culture in Wichita on Saturday. May I please now ask the individuals with Bike Walk of Wichita, along with Councilmember Tuttle, and any of the councilmembers who will be participating in the Prairie Fire Marathon, 5K, or Half Marathon?
You can still sign up.
Put that pressure on, geez. I look like a runner.
While our guests come forward, I'm just gonna say that the Prairie Fire Marathon, Half Marathon, and 5K will be held this Sunday at Equity Bank Park, and so you can still sign up for that 5K, Half Marathon, and Marathon. I will read this proclamation. The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Bike Walk Wichita is partnering with the city of Wichita and community organizations to celebrate Walktober and encourage residents to enjoy walking and outdoor activities. Whereas the pleasant temperatures and beautiful scenery of October provides the perfect opportunity to promote regular physical activity, such as walking, which improves overall health, reduces the risk of chronic disease, and supports mental well-being. Whereas Walktober is a community-wide initiative that inspires individuals and neighborhoods to make walking a daily habit, fostering healthy lifestyles and increased physical activity. Whereas participating in Walktober strengthens community connections and builds relationships among friends, families, coworkers, and neighbors through shared outdoor experiences. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Walktober in the city of Wichita and encourage us all residents to step into a healthier, more active way of life.
Good morning Mayor Wu, members of City Council and community partners. My name is Holly Terrell and I serve as the Executive Director of Bike Walk Wichita. It's a privilege to join you today as we recognize Walktober, a month-long celebration of walking, wellness, and connection in our city. Walktober is more than a campaign, it's an invitation, a chance for each of us to show up, slow down, step outside, and rediscover the simple power of walking. Whether it's a morning stroll to clear your mind, a lunchtime walk with coworkers, or an evening adventure throughout your neighborhood, every step strengthens not only our bodies, but the fabric of our community. This initiative began right here in Sedgwick County in 2008, initiated by councilperson Becky Tuttle and others, and has continued to grow through strong partnerships among the city of Wichita, the Health and Wellness Coalition, Bike Walk Wichita, and numerous local organizations that share the vision of a healthier, more connected community. Together, we've shown that when we make walking easy, accessible, safe, and fun, people respond and our neighborhoods thrive. Walking improves physical and mental health, reduces stress, supports local businesses, and helps us see our community in a new light. It's also one of the most equitable forms of transportation. No special equipment or membership required, just a pair of shoes and a willingness to move. This October, we invite everyone to set the pace to participate, advocate, collaborate, and educate. Participation means getting out there and taking a walk. Advocacy means encouraging others to join you. Collaboration happens when we come together across neighborhoods, workplaces, and organizations. And education reminds us to share the benefits of walking and the importance of creating safe, accessible spaces for everyone. On behalf of Bike Walk Wichita, I'd like to thank the City Council for recognizing Walktober and for the ongoing commitment to active transportation and healthy living. Together, we're keeping Wichita moving forward, one step, one story, and one neighborhood at a time. Thank you.
Thank you again to Bike Walk Wichita, and I also want to use a point of privilege to thank the Park and Rec Department for organizing Open Streets ICT, the three events this year. Your entire staff did a great job encouraging people to walk, to bike, to scoot around with their scooters, and just have a good time with community. So thank you to the Parks and Rec Department. May I please ask the Family Promise of Greater Wichita to come forward at this time? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Family Promise of Greater Wichita began operations in October of 2016 with a mission to serve the most vulnerable among us, children and families facing homelessness and housing insecurity, and has since become a leading voice for sustainable, community-driven solutions. Whereas Family Promise brings together more than 1,000 local volunteers, dozens of faith organizations, and a network of dedicated partners to provide shelter, meals, and relational support that preserves family dignity and offer hope in times of crisis. Whereas through collaborative partnerships with donors, landlords, and local service providers, Family Promise prevents homelessness through rental assistance and wraparound services that reduce trauma and strengthen the entire community." Whereas rooted in the belief that every child deserves a home, Family Promise continues to expand its impact each year, empowering families on their journey to lasting stability through innovative programs and a compassionate, relationship-centered approach. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim October 6th through 10th, 2025 as Family Promise Week 2025.
Good morning, my name is Dawn Epp and I'm the Executive Director of Family Promise of Greater Wichita. And behalf of, on behalf of our organization, we want to thank our, the city of Wichita, our mayor, and our councilman for supporting us in this effort and recognizing this week. Family homelessness is a hidden crisis and we are proud to work with community partners, we're part of the Coalition to End Homelessness, a wide volunteer base to really change the narrative on this issue. And this week, as Family Promise Week, we will work very hard to do that. So again, I want to thank you for your support and please follow us on Facebook to know how you can support this work. Thank you.
May I please ask Wichita's finest and bravest, the Wichita Fire Department, to come forward at this time? And any of the councilmembers who would like to come to the front for this proclamation? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the city of Wichita is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all residents and visitors, and fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, with the widespread use of lithium-ion batteries adding unique fire risks. Whereas many household electronics, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, use lithium-ion batteries that if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, ignite, or explode, as noted by the National Fire Protection Association, which urges residents to buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly. Whereas lithium-ion batteries store significant energy in a compact space and practices such as overcharging using uncertified chargers or exposing batteries to damage greatly increase the risk of fire or explosion. Whereas proper disposal and recycling of lithium-ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks, and the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home, reminds everyone to use, charge, and recycle batteries safely. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025 as Fire Prevention Week."
Good morning, Tammy Snow, Fire Chief. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Wu and the City Council for this proclamation, also to thank the citizens of the community in helping us prevent fires each and every day. Fire Prevention Week is an opportunity to remind the community that fire safety starts at home and in everyday actions. It's a time to educate, engage, and empower our residents to take simple steps to save lives, like checking your smoke alarms, planning escape routes, and practicing safe habits. Through this observance, we reinforce our shared responsibility to prevent fires before they happen and to protect this community. Thank you for your help.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Public agenda. The public agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the public agenda other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker is Lisa Fry Bloom, First and Second Street and McLean Boulevard.
Good morning Mayor and councilmembers. Lisa Fry Bloom, 3721, East 24th Street North. And I'm here today as a volunteer with Bike Walk Wichita and I want to tell you about a road safety assessment that we did on August 18th. I invited partners to assess the intersection at First and Second Street and McLean Boulevard with me. So I often walk that intersection, I walk it alone, I walk with my family, and I'd become aware of dangers in that intersection and I wanted to do an assessment with people who know the area, who know about safe walking, and who know about traffic safety. So I was lucky, two of your city staff members participated with me in that assessment, Paul Gunselman, Traffic Engineer, and Jamie Nix, your Director of Libraries. And we were joined by Dustin Hendricks of Exploration Place, Holly Terrell of Bike Walk Wichita, and Shelley Rich of the Health and Wellness Coalition. And we also appreciate that Councilmember Ballard was not able to attend, but she expressed interest. And all those people got to see the report that I prepared after our assessment. And I emailed that report to you last week and so you have it and I hope, I hope you will look at it if you haven't already because it's only four pages. And one of them's pictures. And I want, I just want to highlight three considerations that we believe should prioritize this intersection's upgrades. The first, I know you're well aware of, the First and Second Street Bridge replacement that's directly to the east of this intersection. At our assessment, we talked to, you know, some of us talked about how this is really a you know, some of us talked about how this is really just an extension from that bridge. Something that we really talked about was the current Exploration Place outdoor expansion. It's going to require that families visiting that attraction park nearby. They're going to have to walk in that intersection to access the amenity. And Dustin had reported that already some of their events, like their outdoor movie nights, families have had to park and walk. And they've kind of watched them struggle doing some of that. Finally, it's a gateway to the west end of downtown, to Delano, to the Ark River Path, to the Keeper of the Plains. You know, we know that residents and visitors are in this intersection. We do feel it needs to be safer. It needs to be more comfortable for those of all ages and abilities and all users of the road. So as we heard, it's Walktober. It's also National Pedestrian Safety Month. And, you know, I just thought, what better time to talk to you about this intersection? And I provided the detailed concerns and recommendations of our assessment in that report. So you have that. And we just really feel that this intersection needs to be planned and upgraded for a minimum of upgrades. But it could also be reconfigured. So some of us talked about that, you know, a traffic circle might be appropriate, as is just a couple of blocks south in Delano. So thank you very much for looking and reading out the report and for hearing me today.
Thank you, Lisa. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Ronald Nagel, City Collaboration with Federal Immigration Officials and Other Federal Law Enforcement Agencies.
Ronald Nagel, 2242 Lindbergh Street. I'd like to thank the Commission and the mayor for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I am here today to address some of the concerns of your constituency, the Wichita citizens. In other towns, media has reported that city law enforcement has met with federal law enforcement to engage what can only be described as uncommon collaborations with representatives of the Trump administration. Specifically, I am referring to immigration enforcement. But more generally, my questions regard any law enforcement agency, federal law enforcement agencies. I am asking the City Commission and/or the Police Department to issue a media release answering the following questions. Has a city or any department within the city been asked to meet with immigration enforcement, commonly known as ICE, or the FBI, or any other federal officials for any situations that could be considered historically uncommon? Have any such meetings already occurred? Are any such meetings planned? Absent an answer today, I respectfully request of the city that prior to entering into any such agreements or future meetings with federal law enforcement, that the Commission inform the public prior to their decision and allow multiple opportunities for the public to comment prior to any such actions. To summarize my request, please, as representatives of the people of Wichita, do not blindside the public with a decision to facilitate immigration enforcement. Thank you for your attention to these matters.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, mayor. First, I agree with you, sir. Can't speak for ICE. I do want to let you know we approve these things, I think annually. We do have joint task force work. It's not uncommon. It's work that's been happening for years with the Police Department, with the Department of Justice, ATF. And I think there's another department that they're working on. And there's just different efforts that they have. It's not around ICE or immigration, but those partnerships and collaborations have been occurring for years, just so you know. Nothing nefarious there with that. But I agree with you on going forward with some of those other things going on in the country.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Stephen Ahmed, AI-powered surveillance cameras.
Stephen Ahmad, 5400 East 21st Street North. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Every day we hear more about AI and it may be put in more and more things. I'm sure some of you may use it or enjoy content created by it. I'm here to tell you there's ongoing unacceptable use of it happening in the city. The City of Wichita has taken a contract with Flock Safety starting in 2020 and expanding it in 2024. I'm certain all of you are familiar with it and how according to WPD, has recovered $5.4 million stolen property and allegedly solved violent crime. WPD has also stated the data from the cameras deleted after 30 days and are only used to take photos of license plates. Of each city council member here, I ask of you, have any of you actually walked past any of these cameras? If you had, if you'd paid attention to them, you would know that they take photos of more than just those license plates, but also photos of people and their faces. If you pay attention to Flock's own marketing and even just their website, you'll see they want to help in predictive policing and want to expand to private companies so they can monitor employees. The council approved and expanded the use of cameras in the city, and that expansion came at a cost, as each camera costs $30,000 a year to operate and $1.5,000 to install. Based on the April 2024 number of 167 cameras in the city, that comes to an outrageous cost of $5 million a year to operate these cameras. Flock is not only a concern or a waste of money, but an active threat to public safety. In the town of Evanston, Illinois, the city canceled their contract with Flock after they violated Illinois law and shared data with federal agencies without permission. After taking them down, the cameras were then put back up by Flock despite the demands of the city. And so the city had to resort to taping the cameras up and blocking them from being able to record any other cars or people. In 2021, a deputy in Ketchy, here in Sedgwick County, used Flock cameras to stalk his ex. Further, in 2022, a police chief in the City of Sedgwick misused the city cameras 228 times to stalk his ex and her new boyfriend. The cameras remain a threat to public, not only due to possible abuse by law enforcement on the local level, but on the federal level, and threats to privacy and security of our democracy. I implore every member of this council to immediately cancel the contract with Flock and demand every single camera be taken down as soon as possible. Predictive policing has absolutely no place in Wichita and is not welcome by the people living here. I also encourage members of the City Council and anyone in this room to talk to me after this meeting if you have any further questions. We keep the discussion active and solve this before it becomes a further issue. And with the remaining three minutes, any questions, I will gladly answer them. Saying none, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Jeff Moore, The Homeless Problem.
Jeff Moore? I see he's not here. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
420 Gem Camping Ordinance.
I also don't see this individual. That means we have two spots for anyone who would like to address the council. You can come up to the microphone. You have five minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Good morning. My name is Chelsea Portillo. I'm a constituent of Ron Estes. I live on the east side of Wichita, 1133 North Del Rose in District 1. For the past two years, while Wichita has continued life as normal, Gaza has endured relentless bombardment, siege, and starvation. 90% of Gaza's population has been displaced. Over 680,000 Palestinians have been killed. And essential infrastructure, such as hospitals and water systems, are just gone. People are dying of hunger and disease in this modern age, in the year of our Lord, 2025. But this didn't begin in 2023. Palestine has been under illegal occupation for 77 years. Since 1948, millions of Palestinians have been exiled and denied their basic human rights. Since the Nakba in 1948, which I encourage all of you to look up immediately, Israel has illegally expanded settlements, annexed land, and imposed apartheid policies across the West Bank and Gaza. The global Samudra flotilla was just intercepted in international waters by the Israeli Defense Force, not even a week ago. And as of this writing, there are at least 150 activists from 20 different countries still being held in the Israeli prison. It is time for the Midwest to lead the charge in telling Israel that enough is enough. While Dan Osman and Barb Wassinger were busy listening to Israeli propaganda during their 50 states one Israel conference, which I again encourage you to look up if you are unaware. Children in Gaza are dying. They are dying torturously slow, antagonizingly painful death. This is not a conflict. This is ethnic cleansing. This is colonization, and this is genocide. We must speak out, and we must demand justice. We must stand with Palestine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chelsea. We have room for one more individual who would like to address the council.
Hello, my name is Liesl Wright. I live at 2322 West 13th Street North here in Wichita. I'm actually going to read an article from August of this year from The Canary. An IDF soldier just exposed that Israel deliberately let October 7th happen. Damning new testimony from an IDF soldier stationed at the Gaza border on 7th of October has backed up growing evidence that Israel deliberately allowed the Al-Aqsa flood operation to happen. This soldier's statement has turned the mirror on Israel's cynical propaganda once again. While the genocidal occupier and war criminal has made repeated accusations over Hamas's human shield strategy, instead, it's Israel that has used its own soldiers and civilians as fodder for fueling its violent colonial aspirations in Palestine. Unsurprisingly, none of the mainstream media have picked up on this. Of course, it's in keeping with their 22-month complicity in downplaying Israel's genocide and atrocities in Gaza. IDF soldier testimony suggests Israel let 7th of October happen. Shalom Shitrit. An IDF soldier who was on duty on 7th of October has made a damning testimony to the Knesset. He testified that high-level IDF officials issued a strange message the morning of Hamas's Al-Aqsa flood operation. Israeli soldiers said they specifically received orders to cancel all patrols along the Gaza border from 5:20 a.m. until 9:00 a.m. on October 7th, 2023. And there's footage online on this article of the Israeli soldier testifying to the Knesset Committee. According to the dissident, Shitrit said during his testimony that at 5:20 a.m. on 7th October, "We are playing on the phone, and suddenly a strange message came up from my deputy commander. And what he says on the radio is something like this. I don't know why, but an order was given that there would be no patrols in the Gaza fence until 9:00 a.m." He went on to explain how. "Every morning, the platoon raises alert. And in the estimation, there are no mornings in which there are no patrols on the fence, because you're an operational battalion, and that is part of the matter." So according to Shitrit's testimony, someone from a place of high command decided border IDF soldiers would not patrol the morning of 7th of October. Shitrit indicated how unprecedented this was. It obviously raises huge questions, namely, it know of the impending Hamas operation. I think it's new. And opportunistically chose to enable it. Israel had the intel, but ignored it. Of course, this testimony from an on-duty IDF soldier sits next to a wealth of documented evidence. Israel knew of the attack well ahead of time. Reporting on this, U.S. independent outlet, The Young Turks, pointed to a number of these. One was a New York Times article from November 2023 detailing how Israeli officials had obtained Hamas's battle plan for the October 7th terrorist attack more than a year before it happened. It also highlighted an article by Israeli news site, Harretz, from June 2024, which buttressed this further. It confirmed that the Israeli intelligence had detailed knowledge of Hamas's plan. The same outlet has underscored IDF command ignoring intel from women soldiers patrolling the border, warning of an impending attack. Moreover, Israel deliberately deployed its Hannibal directive that makes the soldier's testimony all the more believable as well. This Israeli military police prefers the murder of its own soldiers over them becoming hostages. But they also included civilians. Israel killed their own people on October 7th, 2023. Numerous press reports and revelations from Israeli military officials revealed a mass Hannibal order that directed the slaughter of civilians Hamas took captive. Released hostages meanwhile have described. Okay, they killed their own people. That's who killed those people, those civilians, on October 7th, 2023.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, mayor. Just one quick question. I think it's important as you talk about the war over there. Do you have the latest number of folks in Gaza who've been killed? The last number I saw was 64,000. Do you have a number of those?
At least 680,000.
680,000?
Yes, at least. The numbers are horrible. See, it's hard to count dead people when they're under rubble.
Thank you.
And Gaza's rubble, there's nothing left.
I agree. The images from over there are truly disturbing. And I hope more people look in to see the tragedy happening over there. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 25.
Councilmembers, are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull Item 5A.
Any other items, councilmembers? I see none. I move to approve the consent agenda without Item Number 5A.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 7-0. Item Number 5A in the consent agenda.
Thank you, mayor. I pulled this item because of the Golf Board of Governors Quarterly Meeting. I have increasingly been getting complaints and calls about availability of tee times. First of all, let me say that Jesse Kaufman, his team, supported by Reggie Davidson and his team, have done an absolutely wonderful job of getting the golf courses back in shape, positive cash flow, reinvesting back in the golf courses. I think that's wonderful. But you also have more people wanting to play golf because of that. So I just tell you, for the last two years, my son has complained about never getting a tee time, being able to get tee time at Texan Solfer on Saturday or Sunday morning. He gets up at 4:30, but 5 o'clock he gets up. gets up at four-thirty, but five o'clock, he gets on there, he can never, ever get one. And I found out why, because someone has the first four tee times on Saturday and Sunday blocked. Got a group that they blocked at tee times. Apparently, there is a lot of groups that have tee times that are blocked, not available to the general public. I'm not against people playing golf. A lot of these are seniors like me that play golf, but it is a good old boy system, and I don't know if there's a balance in there, something we can do. But the Golf Board of Governors has authority over the golf system. So recognize that, and we as City Council can, the only course we get, the only recourse we have is to eliminate the Board of Governors, because the Board of Governors does have the authority. I just really believe in the leadership of Jesse Kaufman and his team. They've done a wonderful job, and I would just ask that the Board of Governors review the policy, come up with a solution that is fair and equitable, work with Jesse and Reggie and their teams, and come up with something that's equitable. And I'd like to just invite either Reggie or Jesse or both of you to the podium, and if you could address this, I would appreciate it.
So we're gonna have Jesse kind of give an overview of the process that you're referring to and some of the concerns we have there, and then I'll follow up with what we're doing with the next steps and how we're incorporating it into our Park Master Plan and being able to look at the entire system and what changes we're gonna be making.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Jesse Kaufman, Golf Division Manager. This topic, it is a big topic. You're absolutely right. So I want to kind of give a little background on how the booking process works before I get into that. So for anyone that doesn't know, seven days in advance, we open tee times at five AM. So this morning at five AM, tee times for next Tuesday opened up. And the way I like to tell people, it's basically we open up concert tickets for sale, and they sell out immediately, especially the early morning time. So the demand, I mean, it's a good problem that we have that much demand, but it is a problem. And the goal is equity and equal access to these tee times for everyone. Over the last thirty, forty years, there have been leagues and groups that have played weekly, played regularly, and they are great customers and supporters of the golf system. But through that time, they have been considered leagues, so they book their tee times. They basically have standing tee times throughout the entire year. When the golf system wasn't that busy, it wasn't a big deal, because you could just get the tee time after that group. Now, it's a big deal. It is by far the biggest complaint that we get. This does fall under the scope of the Board of Governors, and we started several conversations earlier this year on how do we, how do we get around this. I don't feel like they were very effective. The first thing we did was try to come, or the Board of Governors did was try to come up with, to define what is considered a league, and that what, what they kind of came up with was that it needed to have at least twelve members. They needed to have official bylaws and officers in place, and then the restrictions were you could only get tee times two days a week. Well, when you have so many groups that fall under those parameters, we really didn't achieve anything as far as, you know, addressing the issue. It's, I definitely feel like we have to readdress this and figure something out that's better. I think for public courses, the way that we have our league set up is very, it's not common at all. It's more for a private course that you can get away with that. On a public course, especially the demand that we have and the population and the amount of golfers that we have here, it does limit the amount of available tee times for the public. So it's something that I definitely am pushing to, to address. Some of the things I've done internally that I hope will have an effect, this is something I'll get with the Golf Board once we, we get everything in place, but is a new point-of-sale and tee booking, tee sheet booking system, software. With this new system, it's, the RFP is open right now. It closes at the end of this month, and then we'll do presentation. And that's one of the big things I want to look at is what are the different functions that we could allow to, groups, to, groups to book maybe one or two or three tee times back-to-back, because that's, that's what they want. They just want to make sure, we've played as a group for thirty years. We want to make sure we get back-to-back tee times, and I understand that. So hopefully with that new system, it allows for a little bit more flexibility on how we can set that up and be fair to everyone. Maybe they don't get certain set tee times, but they can get back-to-back tee times when they're available. And the other part that's a big problem is this puts a lot of unnecessary pressure on staff at the counter. When someone's very upset about this, it's not fair to our staff, because nine times out of ten, the staff agrees with the customer, but we're stuck with, with the rules that we're putting in place. So I definitely think a hundred percent agree. And then I think Reggie's gonna talk about another idea that we've had, but that's kind of where we're at. I mean, it seems like it's a little bit more complicated than what it, what it appears to be on the surface, just because this has been going on for so long, and we don't want to suddenly break up these groups that have been planned forever. But a hundred percent, we have to come up with a better solution and make sure everyone has equal access to our tee times.
Thank you, Jesse. Just to be clear, I'm not against men's club, ladies day.
Sure.
Couples league, none of that. It's these private little one-offs. There's a lot of them.
I mean, we found, we know how it works. When we put these parameters in place, suddenly three groups that I don't even know if they knew each other got together and said, hey, let's call ourselves a league. So now, you know, they find a workaround. So we have to eliminate the possibility that'd make it fair for everyone.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And as a follow-up with that, we're in the process, we're approved moving forward with the Park Master Plan, and as part of that, we're looking at how we operate as the entire department and as a system, and looking at the golf system and see how it is working, seeing benchmark against other communities, see how those things are being done. So like Jesse mentioned, it's not common in some other communities with public golf courses. So we're gonna make sure that we're aligning and providing something that's gonna be consistent to give everyone equal access and equity to the courses. So that'll be part of what we're doing when we kick off the Park Master Plan planning process as well.
Well, thank you very much. Both of you, I appreciate, appreciate your leadership. As the courses get better and better, the problem's gonna get worse and worse, because a lot of people want to play them. So that's a good problem to have, and I do appreciate everything you do for the golf system. Golf is a very important activity for our city. You know, the country clubs get the, the, the big dogs play there, but you know, the middle managers and the, and the people who really work and make the city go like to play golf, and it's important for them to have an ice golf course to play. And we do, and we're getting even better. So thank you.
Sure. And Jesse has a point of reference as well. Like you mentioned, it's a good problem to have, and Jesse and I are meeting and benchmarking from last year to this year on our revenue with five hundred thousand dollars and the plus compared to revenue from last year to this year. So we're definitely moving in the right direction. We just got to see how we balance it out so that we can make sure we continue to grow and meet new customers that come in as well.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Good job.
Thank you both. We have more council members that want to have questions or comments. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just more comment. First, thank you, guys. From what I hear, the golf, you know, the golf system here is just thriving and a lot of the improvements that you've made and suggested and that we've made, it seems to really be paying off. This is something that I have heard from some of my friends as well, not necessarily my constituents, but a lot of the friends that I have that do play golf. So it sounds like we have some options out there, but I just wanted to back up that I've kind of heard the same thing from several people out in the community that the Vice Mayor has as well.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, big thank you. That's super awesome to hear that the numbers are even better than last year, I guess unless you're trying to get a tee time. Two quick questions. Is it typically only Tex that we're having? Okay.
No, it would, Tex and Auburn are the, probably the, the two that are most effective, but it's all four.
Okay. And also, what do some other cities do? I mean, I know we have a new software coming, which hopefully will be helpful, but is there something that somebody else is doing?
Yep. I mean, typically, there would be the way, most common I've seen, each course would have maybe a men's league, a ladies league, a couples league, and a seniors league. One day a week, it's ran by the club. The club blocks off the tee times. You come through us to, to be a part of that, and that's it. That's the only leagues that they have. Maybe some corporate leagues in the afternoon, some companies that want, but typically, those are in the afternoons, not quite as high demand. But it's, there's not so many leagues that are ran by individuals, where we just block the sheet and then they, they have full control. It's very uncommon.
Thank you. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, someone who represents both Tex and Auburn. I hear this pretty often, so I just wanted to echo the Vice Mayor's comments.
Thank you both. One last thing. In those minutes, people can look at these minutes, but I just wanted to highlight that over six hundred participants are already enrolled in two thousand and twenty-five, surpassing last year for the first tee program, which is for young youth in our community to learn golf and to play, and it is a partnership with Boys and Girls Clubs. So thank you for doing that and continuing that collaboration, encouraging our young people to stay active and love the sport. So thank you both.
If I could add to that real quick, we had a total, this year, we're gonna have a total of around seventeen hundred juniors coming through our programming. So the numbers you're seeing are just for first tee, but we have several other programs. First tee's fantastic. They're all fantastic, but we're steadily trying to increase those numbers, so.
Thank you, Jesse. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to echo that, too. And your inclusion of women, you have lots of programs to get women playing golf, youth playing golf. You're just, you're just trying to make it wider and more attractive and better for everybody. So I do really appreciate that. That's the future of golf. So thank you.
Thank you both. I see no more questions from the council. We will open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Vice Mayor Johnston.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item five A.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven-zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday, October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, for the following items. For engineering, we have the BNR Plant One odor control and SCADA improvements for Donlenger Wildcat BNR Project Phase One LLC for twelve million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars, subject to your approval of the engineer's estimate and budget authorization today. We have the water distribution system, sanitary sewer phase one and six of the water main extension to serve courtyards at Jacob's Farm Edition for McCullough Excavation Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of two million, two hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. We have the OJ Watson Park concession building landscape improvements for Roston Construction LLC for two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. We have the Fifteenth Street Bridge over the Wichita Drainage Canal for Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of two million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and six dollars and fifty cents. We have the two thousand and twenty-five dirt street paving phase one for Pearson Construction LLC for an aggregate bid total of one million, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. We have the hydraulic bridge deck repair over Middle Fork Chisholm Creek for Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. We have the engine repair for a two thousand and fourteen Gillik bus for Cummins Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. We have the life safety systems test and inspection for Sandifer Engineering Controls Incorporated for an estimated annual cost of nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars per year. We have the mat mop towel and fender cover rental for Aramark Uniform and Career Apparel Group Incorporated, doing business as Vestis Uniform and Workplace Solutions for estimated eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy cents per year. We have the paper products, toilet tissue, towels, and miscellaneous paper products for Laugh Tea Williams and Associates Incorporated, Brady Industries of Kansas, Sam Tell and Son Incorporated, and Imperial Bag and Paper Company LLC for the groups listed for one year before one year options to renew. We have the SCADA telemetry and programming upgrade for Gilbert Mosley and North Industrial Corridor remediation system for Decker Electric Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. We have the irrigation improvement project at McDonald Golf Course for United Golf LLC for an aggregate bid total of one million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We have the server hardware extension maintenance for Airport for PPT Holdings LLC for fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-eight cents. We have the Kubota tractor with Terrain Master flail mower from McCullough Enterprises Incorporated, doing business with Wichita Tractor Company for one hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. We have the special waste disposal facility change order for Waste Connections of Kansas Incorporated for the amended amounts listed. We have the installation of water utility service lines change order for Utility Maintenance Contractors LLC for the amended amount of one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. We have the WPD Uniform and Uniform Equipment Accessories Management Program change order for Galls LLC for an amended annual usage of nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty cents. I did not make that up. And the Wichita Fire Department Uniform and Uniform Equipment Accessories Management Program change order for Galls LLC for an amended estimated usage of seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. We have the Rock Salt for Snow and Ice Control change order for Hutchison Salt Company for an amended annual usage of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. We have the Telescoping Steel Sign Post Systems change order for Centerline Supply for an amended amount of forty thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. We have the Procurement Software, Software as a Service change order for UniSolutions Incorporated for implementation in four years listed as an aggregate bid total of four hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. For Airport, we have the Window Cleaning Services Airport change order for EH Technical Solutions Incorporated for an amended estimated usage of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and four cents. This is how to become a vendor with the city. This is our purchasing calendar of small business resource partner events that the city's hosting or participating in, and these are open public opportunities out on the street today, and I'd be happy to try to answer your questions, and I recommend your approval today.
Thank you, Josh. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Great job, Josh. This is what happens when you have a fifth Tuesday, right? This is the longest one I've ever seen. It's, it's way back, but could you possibly go to slide seven? I might have looked at it wrong, but I just wanted to check. Thank you. It looks like Snodgrass and Sons Construction Company was the low bid. Is that a typo? Am I looking, oh, oh, I, okay, sorry, I inverted the numbers. My bad. Thank you so much. Thank you. There was a lot to absorb. Thank you.
I apologize.
Can you go back to slide five, please? We'll be talking about this item as new business item number thirteen. Again, this was really to highlight the BNR project. Can you tell us, is this, was this estimated to be twelve point two million?
I think the engineer's estimate was exceeded, so I need to defer to Public Works.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmember Gary Janson, Public Works and Utilities. I will cover this in the item here in a little bit, but the, our estimate was eleven million dollars.
And you'll talk about it during number thirteen, or do you want to share why it was higher?
That's up to you. I can either share it twice, or I can talk about it later.
Just so that the audience understands that this item was on the consent agenda, and I moved it to new business so that folks would understand that the bio-nutrient plant, removal plant, had an adjustment. And again, can you just explain, it was initially, the estimate was eleven million. Why is it now twelve point two million?
I think there's probably several factors that led to this. There's a lot going on in the market right now for contractors, especially the contractors that would do this type of work. Our owners rep reached out in addition to, you know, how our projects are posted to all vendors. There's other way that projects of our size, especially in a community of our size, make it out there. Our owners rep also reached out to some specific contractors to try to garner interest. I think there's a lot going on, again, with contractors right now that probably led to the Donlenger Wildcat team, I think probably everybody's aware, is doing the work for all of the work at Plant Two for the BNR improvements. This is the last project as part of the BNR program to be bid. We certainly expected a bid from them, but there's just some unique work. but there's just some unique work with this facility. There's some really close quarters to work with, working around an operating plant, just as we are doing it at Plant Two with the main part of the project, really makes it hard to estimate costs. So we will work with the contractor once construction is underway, as we've done with the other packages, to see if there's any way to value engineer the cost down.
Thank you, Gary. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one additional point. We have pretty much a hard budget of $387 million on this overall project. This does not bump that up, right?
Correct, thank you, and I should have mentioned that, and I'll I'll cover that again later, too. This is, the difference in cost here is included within that overall original budget, yes.
Okay, so yeah, I just wanted to make sure the public knew that as well.
Yeah.
Moving around money within the project that we have allocated.
Correct.
All right, and I'll mention this later as well, looking forward to that odor control being completed.
We are, too, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor, two questions. I know that we're not set to go over budget right now. Is there any expectation that will go above the 387?
I hope not. We still have, like I said, this is the last project within the overall program to bid. We do still have some capacity within the overall project, even after this, based on what we've done with some value engineering in the original packages, especially the biggest parts of it, Packages Two and Three. It's possible, looking ahead, because of the amount of work that we've got left, we could start pushing up against that budget at some point in time. We do have a contingency budget in place that, very similar to what we've done with the water treatment plant through the course of building the new plant there, in case there were any additional work that might come up above and beyond that budget. We're keeping a close eye on it, I meet with staff regularly. Last we looked at was just yesterday, and right now, we're still in a good place.
Okay, we're still in a good place right now.
We are.
Okay. This would probably be a question maybe for Jennifer in Legal, so because we normally approve consent agenda items prior to approving bids, this would be approving this recommendation for a bid, but then this item is later on the agenda, but this is to approve the overestimate bid. So would this nullify, by approving this bid, would this nullify the, or item 13?
Josh, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are okay to do it in this order?
Yeah. Yeah, you're being requested to approve the engineer's estimate and budget authorization, and you're absolutely right, the consent agenda usually is presented beforehand. If you go about this route, you could have, conceptually, an instance where you approve the engineers, new engineer's estimate and budget authorization in the project, and you could deny the new business agenda item, in theory.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Two more questions. Slide number 14.
Thank you, Gary.
This is about paper products. I just wanted to know, I know that you've been trying very hard and encouraging small businesses to become vendors for the city of Wichita so that they know that there's opportunities for them to bid. Are any of these small businesses?
I don't know on top of my head if they're new, they're small businesses. I will tell you, one of them is new specifically, that we have not encountered before. And in small business, as a whole, this is a discussion, we're working with the city manager's office to revamp the small business program. And anytime the city manager's office is really great about this, they'll forward vendors to us. And the feedback that we've had so far is, I'm surprised how easy it is to bid with the city. So that's a really big compliment for us, I appreciate.
Good job to your team. I know that one of the slides shows when you have those sessions, and we really encourage people to check that page out so that they can know how to become a vendor. And last but not least, slide number 16, since we just talked about golf. This looks like we're under budget. I think we budgeted $2 million for this, is this correct?
Don't know on the budget estimate. I'm getting a correct from our Director of Golf.
Which, again, I wanted to highlight this because it is under budget, and great job to Jesse and the team in trying to get us a bid that is under budget but still provides that great quality. So thank you very much for that hard work. With that, I see no one else. Correct, Councilmember Glasscock, you're still on the board. I see no one else on the board. With that, I will move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Starlight Drive-In Loan Extension.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Becca Johnson, Office of Community Services, for the record. On December 18, 2018, the City Council approved a $200,000 loan to Starlight LLC, the operator of Starlight Drive-In, for the acquisition of two digital projectors and other related equipment and installation costs. The loan was amortized over five years with interest only 1% for the first four years, and then monthly repayment in year five. The funds were appropriated out of the funds allocated to District Three from the sale of the city-owned Hyatt Regency Hotel in Wichita. On December 27, 2022, Blake Smith, the operator of Starlight, requested and received an extension of the loan agreement for two years due to the financial hardship of COVID and a slow industry recovery. On February 4, 2025, the City Council approved an amendment to the promissory note to restructure Starlight's loan at Mr. Smith's request. Mr. Smith made a $50,000 payment following the restructuring and agreed to repayment of the balance of $150,000 beginning July 1, 2025, with equal monthly installments of $2,147.33, which includes amortization at 1% through June of 2031. One payment was made in August 2025, reducing the outstanding balance to $147,977.67. Thus far, $64,147.40 in proceeds, including $52,022.33 in principal and $12,125.7 in interest, have been recorded as a program income to the District Three Hyatt project and are available to be reallocated. Recently, Mr. Smith has requested an extension of the loan agreement for six months due to the financial hardship of the summer 2025 storm damage. We were proposing an extension. Starlight has requested a six-month moratorium on principal and interest payments. A new amortization model has been developed, including a six-month moratorium on principal and interest payments. The borrower will begin making monthly payments of the $2,147.33 amount, which includes that 1% in February 2026, with the final payment expected in December of 2031. We do have a revised promissory note that's been created with those terms, and the borrower has provided the city with a new personal guarantee. It is recommended that City Council approve the contract amendment and authorize the necessary signatures. That'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Becca. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Becca, for presenting. Is there any guarantee that he's not going to come back for another extension? You could probably always make an argument that there's financial hardships or something happens. I know he's done that twice so far. Is there anything stopping him from doing it a third time?
There is nothing stopping him from doing that, no.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
This is more in reply to Councilmember Glasscock. I intend for this to be the last.
Becca, do you know by any chance how business is going at Starlight Drive-In pre-COVID versus now in 2025?
Yeah, I don't have that information, and I don't believe Mr. Smith is with us. He's in Tulsa.
Maybe Councilmember Hoheisel has had conversations with Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I believe last time I talked, it was 80, 80 to 85% from what it was pre-COVID, but that was building it back up after a couple of years of slow revenues. It's just a lack of movies out there right now, streaming process is coming up. So this is similar to a lot of theaters, a lot of the obstacles a lot of theaters out there are facing.
And Councilmember Hoheisel, this is obviously in your district. I know that there has been a lot of community interest in trying to save the Starlight. Can you share a bit of why the Hyatt dollars went to Starlight Drive-In initially? And why, obviously, in June of 2025, we had this major storm? What that caused to Starlight Drive-In?
Yeah, thank you. Before I was on council, and the city manager probably has more details than I do, the Drive-In got rezoned from entertainment to, I believe, general. And there was a push by the owner at that time who had been gifted the Drive-In to actually sell it. There were some issues around there. There was a group that really got together about wanting to save the Drive-In because it is a South Wichita treasure and landmark. So the council member at that time agreed with the new owner, Blake, to give him a $200,000 loan from the Hyatt funds at the time. And the scheduled repayment, again, this was obviously before COVID. Then 23 came up, and that was after COVID, and you saw the declining numbers. Again, they were working their way back up. So we did extend it, and we always look for opportunities to help protect the treasures that we have in our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoheisel. I know that you also serve on the Cowtown Board, and so I just wanted to make sure that people understood this portion, which is, often, the city doesn't have just money to loan people. This was a very special circumstance when the city of Wichita sold the Hyatt Hotel. So each council member or each district received dollars. So this question really goes back to the city manager. Can you share if there are any funds left? And if so, in which districts are there funds remaining from the sale of the Hyatt?
I have to go back and look. We provided that information to the council, I think about six months ago. The only changes that I can think of at this point would be in the District Three because of this arrangement. I'd have to go back. Most of the funds, I think, all the funds are gone in District One? Or do you still have community funds?
The only funds we have are in the rotation in Propel.
That's right. And then District Two spent all their funds. District Three, of course, has these funds. And the idea with the loan is if it was successful, it would continue to generate additional funding for future community initiatives. And that's the reason that the council member created that loan the way he did. District Four spent all of their funds. District Five spent all of their funds, and as did District Six. So I think it's really one and three that have some flexibility, and not many, not much.
Thank you, city manager. Again, I wanted to get that on the record because I know that this is a special circumstance in which the city had some dollars allocated to the six council members and their districts. And so there are still some funds left in District One and District Three, but it's very rare because, again, of the sale of the Hyatt.
Right, and just a reminder, at that time, $10 million was put into street maintenance by the council, and each district had $1 million allocated.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you. One last question, there is a personal guarantee from the owner, so if they were to default on the payments, it would be back on him.
Correct.
Thank you.
I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see no one from the public who would like to speak. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Hoheisel's district. Oh, we have comments. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I also echo Councilman Glasscock's. I really do appreciate the personal guarantee on contracts with the city. I think I think that should be a standing practice for the city, so I do appreciate that. So thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I was hard-pressed to support this today, but given a personal guarantee and given Councilman Hoheisel's comments about no intention of bringing this back up, I will be supportive of this today. I actually love the loan program idea and think District Three was very successful in that. And I'm appreciative of that. The 1% interest rate is very generous. But I hope that this will be paid back, that the Starlight is successful. I will likely not support if it comes back for another extension because I want to make sure that the owner is being respectful of taxpayer dollars that he's been given in this unique style program. But I do love the loan program idea, and will be supportive of this today.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. No singing the tune this time around. I will go ahead and just make this motion. I move that the City Council approve the contract amendment and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Agreement and Funding for Biennial Bridge Inspections, Rehabilitation, and Repair.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Paul Gonzelmann, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. The item before you is an agreement and funding for biennial bridge inspections, rehabilitation, and repair. There are over 280 structures/bridges within the city of Wichita. And in September of 2023, the City Council approved an agreement with Trans Systems to provide bridge inspection services for 2023, with the option to renew in 2025. The Federal Highway Administration classifies structures and bridges that span 20 feet in length or more as part of the National Bridge Inventory. And the FHWA and KDOT require structural inventory of all NBI bridges maintained by the city for public safety. These inspections are required on a biannual basis to maintain eligibility for federal funding and for bridge repair and replacement projects. Bridge inspection reports aid in the prioritization of projects for maintenance and replacement programs. And the capital improvement program includes annual funding for bridge rehabilitation and repair as needed and typically recommended by the bridge inspection program. The latest inspection reports on all bridges was completed in 2023, and inspection reports include type of bridge, length of structure, structural condition, observation notes by the inspection team, as well as pictures. As noted during the Board of Bids, this is an example of one of the projects, hydraulic north of 37th Street for deck repair. And 37th Street over the Little Arkansas River is scheduled for repair in 2025, utilizing 2025 funding for railing repairs. The Amidan/Momo Bridge over the MS Mitchell Floodway has also been identified for repairs. Deterioration of joints at both ends of the bridge need to be addressed. And the Oliver Bridge over Gypson Creek. During summer rain events, the slope protection underneath the bridge had eroded. An inspection completed by Trans Systems determined that the bridge is not in danger. However, the slope protection/bank stabilization needs to be replaced. A progressive design-build project delivery will allow for accelerated repair schedule and selection of the design-build team and associated contract while returned to the City Council on a future date. While completing the 2023 bridge inspections, Trans Systems demonstrated an adept approach to the project with expertise in bridge inspections and assigned appropriate staff to complete tasks and reports in a timely manner. Staff is recommending selecting the option to renew the contract in 2025 for the NBI biennial bridge inspection and include inspection of non-NBI structures, river corridor retaining T-walls sections, as well as all pedestrian bridges. A renewal agreement has been prepared for this work. The cost of the 2025 through 2026 bridge inspection agreement is $234,201. The 2026 through 2035 adopted capital improvement program includes $325,000 in general obligation bond funding and ongoing projects for bridge inspections. The 2026 through 2035 adopted CIP also includes $1 million in ongoing projects and $1 million in 2026 for rehabilitation and repair for a total of, both funded by, total of $2 million, both funded by local sales tax. Staff recommends initiating the full amounts of all three projects at this time. It is recommended that the City Council approve the agreement, budgets, use of progressive design-build project delivery, and RFQ criteria, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary. necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. I see no one from the council except for I have one quick question. I know that we launched the drones as first responders pilot program with WPD, and it's on top of a Wichita fire station. I wanted to know if we have considered drones for bridge inspections. That is something that other major cities have done, and so I wanted to know if that is something that's being considered.
Well, I would have to reach out to Trans Systems or GFT to see if they utilize any of that at this time while they do the bridge inspections. I don't know that answer.
I would be curious in that collaboration. Again, in some major cities, they do use the drones for multiple uses, including helping with bridge inspections and public works in general. So that would be another way to utilize technology. Thank you, Paul. I see no further questions. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I will move that the city council approve the agreement, budgets, use of progressive design-build project delivery, and RFQ criteria, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Property and evidence rounds and porter facility improvements.
Good morning, Mayor. City council. Jason Cooley, Captain with the Wichita Police Department. This is the property and evidence facility improvements, additional funding. The Rounds and Porter Building has long been the primary facility for the Wichita Police Department Property and Evidence Operations. The adopted 25 to 34 CIP included just over $1.2 million in general obligation bond funding, and that was initiated on June 10th of this year, 2025. Since then, we have done some preliminary meetings, and some of the initial quotes have gone out and come back. That has indicated there's a need for additional funding. Put two examples here of just the elevator repair. It hasn't come back, but it's projected to be over the initial quote that we thought. And then the IT upgrades have come back already over the original budget. In the adopted 2015 to 24 CIP, it included $3 million in geo-funding to make operational facility improvements. That project was just recently closed as it was finished. The finance department went through and closed some of the latest CIP projects. That was closed in 2025. There was a remaining of $288,014 left in that fund originally for property and evidence. The additional $288,014 was previously allocated for the PNE improvements and now are available for additional funding. It is recommended that you approve the initiation of that $288,014 and authorize the necessary signatures.
Thank you, Captain Cooley. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Captain. This was quite a bit of work when we got the initial audit back a couple of years ago. Could you just detail some of the changes that we have made so far, some of the improvements that we have done within the budget? I remember there was a decent-sized list there.
Yeah, so the lab received a significant, I assume you're talking about the original $3 million?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so the lab received a significant overhaul, updated it, brought it up to accreditation standards. There has been some property and evidence. I use those two terms separately as they're kind of divided inside the facility, but they operate as one. There's been some property and evidence improvements, but the bulk of that was to bring that portion of the lab up to code in the building and through accreditations.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, Captain Cooley. Any further questions? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Ballard's district, if she would like.
Thank you. I move to take the recommended action, approve the project budget, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Police protective equipment projects.
Morning again, Mayor. Council. This is the police protective equipment from the capital improvement projects. The Wichita Police Department uses a variety of equipment to protect staff. That includes body armor, helmets, shields, breaching devices, just to name a few. Additionally, the department is using cell phones as a way to communicate internally and externally, along with voice and photography evidence collection. Most police equipment carries a five-year lifespan, either due to wear and tear or warranty limitations, like our vest carry a five-year warranty on them. WPD has identified an immediate shortage in current inventory for emergency services. To address future emergency equipment needs, systematically staff developed a replacement plan, and funding was incorporated in the capital improvement program. The previously adopted CIP budget included $200,000 in general obligation bonds. The adopted 26 to 35 CIP included an additional $900,000 in the ongoing project. It is recommended the approval of the initiation of funding and authorize the necessary signatures. I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Captain Cooley. Any questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I just wanted to say thank you to both our police department and fire department for making sure that the community stays safe, but also that they themselves are safe with equipment. We saw it firsthand last week when we went to fire training, and the equipment that we were putting on protected us from the fire. And so I know that for the police department, same thing. Your protective equipment is critical to your safety, but also providing safety for our community. So I will be very supportive of this, and so I will move that the city council approve the initiation of additional funds and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Authorization of the second five-year taxes exemption for Air Capital Flight Line LLC.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So a little bit of background. Back in November of 2018, city council approved a letter of intent. That letter of intent was for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $18 million. It allowed for the construction of approximately 144,000 square foot manufacturing facility. The bond issue enabled Air Capital Flight Line to finance the cost of acquiring the real estate, constructing, and ultimately equipping the project. In addition to that, the IRB set forth approval of a 10-year, 100% property tax abatement with a five-year review. Subsequently, ACFL, Air Capital Flight Line, subleased to Spirit Aero Systems, you'll hear me refer to them as Spirit throughout. As part of that arrangement and as part of the 10-year property tax abatement, the commitment at that time was to create and maintain 320 full-time jobs with an annual average wage of about $54,500. About the same time, there was another project that was going on, what's referred to historically as Project Eclipse. This job creation, the additional 320 jobs, was supposed to be above and beyond the 100, or excuse me, the 1,000 jobs that were committed to as part of the Project Eclipse. So it gets a little nuanced here, but hopefully I'll try to put this in order a little bit. So when we did Project Eclipse, the base employment was 10,940 jobs. So if you add the 1,000 jobs required by Project Eclipse, your base employment for the ACFL Spirit review was 11,940. So therefore, the target employment that they were trying to reach at the end of the five-year period and maintained throughout that process was 12,260 jobs. You can kind of see the math there on the screen. In 2019, when the bonds were issued, right, employment totaled 13,577. After 2019, you see the actuals for 2020, 21, 22, 23, 24. You'll see the average base wages. You'll see the percentage of the wages above target. Specifically, I'll point out at this point in time that Spirit outperformed the average base wage of $54,000 by more than 138% in each of the five years, by more than 144% in 2023. And in 2024, the base wage was 154% above the target wage. So as you can see, they did not meet the job requirement. However, there's a lot of extenuating circumstances. We'll get into that here in just a little bit. But under the economic development guidelines, it reads that the city may amend an incentive agreement to reduce the recipient's obligations regarding employment levels, wage requirements, or non-compliance penalties in the event of a federally declared disaster or economic downturn. We're going to touch on that here in just a minute. Talks about an economic downturn being evidenced by a significant decline, a five-point decline in the current economic conditions index from the point at which the incentive agreement was signed, and in such event, the economic development incentives may be continued if a majority of the compliance criteria are met, including capital investment, return on investment, and temporarily achieving job creation commitments. Okay, so this is where we get into some of the numbers. Under the current economic conditions index, in 2019, that index was 90.84. In April of 2020, that dropped by 13 points to 77.79. I'm showing the year-over-year as well as the annualized average for a couple of reasons. But if you go back through the entire history of the economic condition index, year-over-year, a three-point adjustment is ginormous, right? Usually, year-over-year, the economic condition indexes don't fluctuate much more than one or two points, okay? The year-over-year, as you can see, is a significant decline. However, the economic conditions index don't necessarily paint the entire picture of what was going on in the aviation industry over the course of 2019 and into 2020. More specifically, if you'll remember back, between the period of March 2019 and December of 2020, the Boeing 737 MAX was grounded. This had an adverse impact sort of downstream on product delivery and subsequently jobs. So rather than just looking at the economic index, we also took a look at the aerospace index. Year-over-year, from April of 2019 to April of 2020, dropped 25 points. And again, even more so across the annualized average for aerospace, dropped 23.81 points. So throughout all of this, including a global pandemic between 2019 and 2020, which is also why you see a huge drop in employment numbers, particularly in 2019. Since 2019, Spirit has continued to commit to growing and trying to achieve those job numbers. In fact, in August of 2025, as we continued to work with Spirit, their employment totaled 12,060 employees, 120 more than the base employment of the 11,940. So we went back to Center for Economic Development Business Research and some of their cost-benefit analyses, and we said, well, what if the job creation wasn't the 320 that was originally committed to as somewhat aspirated? What if that was only 100 jobs that they had committed to? If they had only committed to 100 jobs, the city's cost-benefit analysis would have returned in 8.29 to 1, county 3 to 1, state 8.66 to 1, and school district 1.47 to 1, again, far exceeding the 1 to 1 that we use for most other projects. Looking forward, financial consideration, Air Capital Flight Line or Spirit or one of its subsidiaries agrees to pay the city's $2,500 annual IRB administration fee for the term of the bonds. Legal has advised that approval of the second five-year tax exemptions entirely at the discretion of city council. But with that being said, as we hope to have demonstrated here today, based on the capital investment made, $18 million, the return on investment, whether it be 100 jobs or 320 jobs, and temporarily achieving job creation commitments, it's recommended that the city council approve the second five-year 100% ad valorem tax exemption. And with that being said, I'll stand for questions. We do have a representative from the tenant, Spirit, who would like to say a few words.
Good morning. My name is Sam Sackett with Spirit Aero Systems. Mayor Wu, council members, just want to say thank you, first of all, for the support that you provide to our aerospace industry, not just our company, but our supply chain in this region and throughout the state, and for the advocacy that each of you have for our amazing men and women who do the real work every day of designing, building, and assembling major aircraft structures for the world's greatest commercial and defense customers. So thank you on behalf of our company for, again, your advocacy for our industry. I'm going to turn it over to Damon Ward, who's our Vice President and Chief Controller, to walk you through a few slides and give you a little bit more of an update about where we are with some of our data points against the IRB targets.
Thanks, Sam. Mayor, city council members, good morning. I echo Sam's sentiments in the sense of thank you for your support and your advocacy for our industry. I'll share just a few more comments to supplement Mr. Anderson's comments on why, what was the investment and why is this important for our industry? So the investment was for construction of the Northeast manufacturing facilities. So for those of you who have had a chance to tour our campus, you will know that this is a very complex manufacturing environment, and it is really intended to support the production rates and expected volume increases primarily on the 737 program, but also for the 767 program. So I know that all of us see the 767 flying around the skies of Wichita on a daily basis. So those products are manufactured in this facility as well as the 737, which is the highest-volume aircraft that Boeing manufactures and sells. So as Mr. Anderson said, it was originally intended to be 144,000 square feet. That was completed. Additionally, we've extended that facility by an incremental 200 feet to support anticipated volume increases that we expect in the future. So I mentioned it's a critical part of enabling us to meet those expected production volumes. We could not produce on a sustained basis what we produce today and what we're expected to produce in the future without this facility. So just a bit more color on some of the numbers, and we do have some updates from what Mr. Anderson shared. You know, as you would expect, we're living in a real-time data environment. So as shared previously, we did exceed the target in 2019 by over 1,300 employees. So we are running really hot. We are producing at about 52 737s per month at the end of 2019. But we know that we had a significant drop-off. So you'll see the line, which was really driven by two primary events. We had the 737 grounding, but additionally, COVID, which really reduced air traffic volumes by about 96%. We all saw that in 2020. So we did have a decline of about 5,500 heads, but you will see the So we did have a decline of about 5,500 heads, but you will see the glide path and the gradual recovery from COVID. And at the end of 2023, we had actually surpassed the committed target. So that recovery did take a few years for the grounding to be resolved through the FAA and Boeing, and then COVID to have a bounce-back of production volumes. One thing that happened in 2024, so very early in 2024, we did have the door plug incident, which the FAA then stepped in and basically suppressed production volumes. So we did have a slight decrease through 2024. What I will say is that we had a very significant effort to bring in new employees to help the recovery on that production volume as the airplug incident was, was resolved. We were not able to fully fill all of those heads by the end of 2024, but we did have nearly 400 contractors with requisitions open to replace those contractors with full-time heads at the end of 2024. As of, you know, just as a bit of an update from what Mr. Anderson shared, as of September, we were above the committed target with our head count. So we were once again above the commitment, and we still do have requisitions to support anticipated rate increases from a future state perspective. So just a bit of additional color on the economic impact and why this is important. Mr. Anderson has shared the, the wage rate difference. You see that represented in the graphs and the charts, but we had nearly $100 million of incremental economic impact for the community as a result of the excess above the committed wage rate. So very significant economic benefit, which supports the, the numbers that were shared from Mr. Anderson. But with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Damon, Sam, and Troy. We'll begin with Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. So are you continuing to hire?
We are continuing to hire, and what I would say is that if you pay attention to the public comments from both the Boeing Company and Spirit, we do anticipate fairly significant rate increases, particularly with the FAA giving Boeing some more flexibility. So we do anticipate rate increases in the future, and that will lead to continued hiring.
Awesome. And my last question is what type of, what kind of workers are you guys looking to hire at this point?
So most of the workers that we're looking to hire are mechanics that would support the touch labor on the 737 program. We also do have, which is really primarily focused on this facility, we are looking at direct touch labor in other areas. So say, for example, the 777X and the 787 programs as well to support anticipated production volume increases on those programs in the future.
Thank you.
Damon, just one last question, maybe it's more for Sam. Can you just give us an update regarding that acquisition by Boeing? Where are we at?
Yeah, I can touch on that, Mayor Wu. So the, the acquisition by Boeing, we know that this has been a fairly long saga. We all appreciate that there is a tremendous degree of complexities related to the reintegration of Spirit into the Boeing Company. Really what we're working through right now, and this is, you know, public, we're still anticipating a fourth quarter close of the transaction. The last remaining steps really are the regulatory process, both with the Foreign Trade Commission in the U.S. as well as the European Commission in the EU. So regulatory steps are, are the next hurdle to get over for the closing of that transaction.
Thank you. Councilmember Toddler.
Thank you, and this, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. And thank you to Troy for your presentation and your work on this initiative. Just kind of a follow-up to Councilmember Ballard, when I met with Sam, I asked some of the same questions, and it's my understanding you hope to hire 600 more individuals by the end of 2025. So that's a robust goal, but I also appreciate you working with WSU Tech, with WSU, with the local high schools to try and, and to, to get those hires. So 600 more by the end of the year would be the goal, is my understanding.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
I see no further questions. Thank you, Damon, again, Sam, and Troy. We'll now open it up for public comment.
Once again, Steven Ahmad, 5400 East Street, First Street North. I think what's critical that was brought up there is not the data they presented, but the data they did not present. They did not present what the median wage at those industries were. They did not present what the turnover rate was for those jobs. They only presented the economic downturn from 2019 to 2020, but did not mention any upturn or downturn from 2021 to 2025, and are continuing to advocate for themselves to receive a continued 100% tax rebate despite their continued evidence of economic growth, and that economic growth could help fund many of those projects we were discussing earlier day, which did not have opening for public comments to come in on as well, as you mentioned. But with many of those, we talked about how there were rises in those budget increases and how some of those were increasing on that cost, including that plant we talked about earlier that had an increase from 11 million to 12.2 million dollars for its budget for that first phase. And in, you know, not having 100% tax rate on this company here could help produce at least some semblance of funds, even if it's not a, you know, complete removal of the tax credit, but dropping to 50% tax credit instead of 100%, but retaining the same requirements for them to meet, to receive those benefits as well as possibly increasing them, and requiring them to report the median wage, not just the average-based wage. Those, those numbers can be skewed as the average versus the median. Thank you.
We'll continue with public comment.
I didn't really prepare anything, but I realize this facility is meant for commercial airplanes, but this company has a relationship with Israel and other companies. It's being acquired by Boeing that has a relationship with Israel, and I'd like for you to consider that because those weapons that, that they're involved in making are killing innocent families and children. Thank you.
We'll continue with public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Hoheisel's district.
Thank you, Mayor. To some of the concerns that were spoken about earlier, we are looking at potentially some changes with the IRB process going forward, perhaps a step-down process to where it declines slowly over the years, perhaps just doing away with some exemptions. This is something that we already had. So this is the five-year look back, and there is a designation for economic downturn like we had. This is a lifeblood profession within our district, within our city, and I do think it's important to work with them as best as we can. I was privileged enough to go to the Economic Outlook Conference the other day, and there are some things that are, we got to work through as far as regulations and the Boeing and the Spirit deal going forward. But aircraft, just civilian aircraft, which is the thing that they focus on the most here, the orders for that are still a mile long. So it's just a matter of ramping up our production whenever we do get these deals done and get through some of the, the limits that the federal government has placed on orders currently. So with that, I do, I will make the recommendation, based on the capital investments made, return on investment, and temporarily achieving job creation commitments, it is, I move that to city council approve the second five-year 100% ad valorem tax exemption.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Pluton, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Pluton, please call the next item.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure.
Good morning, Mayor, city council members. Chris Laberman, MABCD. So the item before you today is addressed as 1416 and 1418 Park Place. It is a duplex, excuse me, that is on the historic registry. This began with you all on April 1st, when we brought this forward as a potential condemnation, as well as an appeal of a Historic Preservation Board denial of that condemnation request. At that point, the city council deferred this item to today in order to give the Historic Midtown Community Development Association a chance to take ownership of the property and make progress. I'm happy to report that at this point in time, they have done that, so that, that ownership has changed as of a little over a month ago. It's been updated in all systems, so it's very easy to see. They have also done a, they have paid all of the taxes, which is very important to us to see, and they've done quite a bit of work to ensure the premise conditions are clean and maintained. They've also done a great deal to clean the interior of the property and have maintained that, the security with that. They do have a permit in place. They do not yet have a full building permit, but they do have an electrical permit in place so that they've been able to get electricity to the inside to facilitate the cleanup as well as help with security and an alarm system. So they have begun that process. They're working towards state credits, tax credits right now in order to help with the project and are trying to get that in place before they get the building permit. So staff plans to continue to work with them on that, again, pending the outcome of this discussion. So I will hit a few pictures quickly here. Obviously, the exterior has not yet been started, so these look similar to what you saw last time, with the exception that the premise conditions, the security of the building, and those items have been addressed to our satisfaction. I do not have pictures of the interior, just based kind of on our legal access, but we have seen the interior. We know it's in good condition. We know that we've also had a council member see the interior. So we've, we've got it on good authority that, that that work has been done. So with that, and at this time, it is the staff recommendation that the council would take any remaining public comment. Let me preface that with reminding you that we did open the public hearing at the April 1st meeting. So I would recommend that the council take any remaining public comment and then close the public hearing, and at that point, return the property to regular code enforcement, thereby removing it from current condemnation consideration. And I'll gladly stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, one quick question. How are we going to continue to put the foot on the gas pedal in making sure that development happens if there's, let's say you remove it from the condemnation list? What is the incentive for the project to continue to be pushed forward? And let's say they didn't continue to meet objectives, how long does it take to get back on the condemnation list?
That's a great question, sir. So the, the council would obviously have the option to defer this action again, to provide them more time to work with, with that oversight. We will work to keep this moving with the permits. What I will say is that with the ownership change, when we analyze this, with the ownership change, there is very little that we would not re-accomplish if, even if this was simply deferred. So if we were to move forward with any type of condemnation, our notifications, we want to put this back in front of the BCSA or advisory board, et cetera, given what has been done, and again, mainly given that new ownership. So in order to meet all of those legal aspects, 95% of that process would be repeated anyway. So you would lose very little by bringing it, removing it from condemnation consideration, even if this was to, to not go forward or not come to fruition.
Thank you.
So, and I do apologize if I did not see earlier that Rondalee had made it today. So we do have a representative of the new owners here, who I'm sure will also be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Rondalee, I have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all of the work that you and the neighborhood have done. Six months ago, this is a little bit different. I know you guys worked really hard to obtain the property. You guys own it outright. Actually, the inside of it is absolutely beautiful. I was really surprised. There was just empty Coca-Cola trash everywhere, but the inside of it is beautiful. It has these awesome built-ins. But I did have a couple of questions. Can you explain how tax credits work and your familiarity with them?
Yes. Well, I've done a lot of tax credits. I live in the historic district, as do most of our volunteers, so we've all been through the process. Plus, I had the opportunity to get a federally designated project done. It's over at the Victor Court. So I've been through this process many times. So the tax credits go in on Friday, and usually it takes the state about six weeks. We've been in contact with them because we want to do the right thing. I mean, we could have picked an easy project, but we need to go back with what's historically accurate, and they will guide us through that and approve it because we wouldn't want to do anything without their approval. So we're going to have a little bit of a holdup here, and then we're ready to go. I have rarely had them come back and say, no, but we've been following. They said we need to do STUCO, and so that's been a little more challenging, but we have a contractor now, and so we're ready to go.
So assuming that, so the applications due Friday, we wait six, eight weeks to see if you're awarded. What happens if you, by chance, are not awarded the tax credits?
We have a letter of funding from the bank, and so we have a donor that'll fund it. Plus, we've reached out to numerous grants and associations here in Wichita for funds already.
And if, the way that I understand it is you haven't started on the exterior at all because you wouldn't be able to apply for credits. Is that right?
Exactly. You can't start the project until they've approved it.
Anything else you'd like to share?
I don't think so.
For anybody that is concerned about you, if you're not awarded the tax credits, the timeline of when you would start the exterior if you had to lean into your donor?
Just as soon as we know. It's a line of credit. So we're approved for a line of credit for the exterior work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rondalee.
Thank you.
I see no further questions. We'll open it up for public comment.
I used to live on Park Place for a long time, and I passed by this property regularly. I always admired it. It's a beautiful building, and I completely support saving this building. It sounds like it can, it can be repaired, and I love the idea that it will be historically accurately repaired. So I just want to advocate for this property being repaired and remaining a part of Wichita's history. Thank you.
I see no further. Hi, Sam.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. Sam Sackett, 1720 North Park Place, here in my personal capacity. I appreciate the, the current owners of the property and the, the effort and the work they've gone into turning this eyesore into something that can be saved and restored. And I think really the neighborhood as a whole is behind that effort, and we like to be able to save and preserve properties whenever possible. My, my only concern or ask of the councils for consideration of, of doing everything possible to keep pressure on to the current landowner, property owners. We were told six months ago that we would have substantial work being done on the restoration of the outside of the building, and as you saw from the picture taken, it looks like a few weeks ago, that has not materialized. There are, there are always good reasons for that, and I think, I think, you know, things happen. And I just think that as we look ahead to the tax credit process, and then anything else that might come up that was unexpected, I would urge the council to think about doing everything in its power to make sure that that pressure remains, because as a neighborhood, this blight at this particular property has been going on for not just six months or a year, or two, or three, or four. It's been like four or five years at least. And so I know that the neighbors in that area are really, really ready for something to, to change, and again, overall supportive of, of the landowner, of the property owner and what they're trying to do. We wish them full success in that, but again, we would just ask if there's anything that the council can do to make sure that that pressure remains so that we can not slide unintentionally into further delay after delay. Thank you.
I have a question for Rondalee then regarding that very question. So I think for folks who are maybe just now tuning in, this is a private property. This is not owned by the City of Wichita. This is private property. And again, as was stated, this has come before this council before because of the blight, and again, unsightliness because it's deteriorated. Can you tell us what the next steps are beyond just a tax credit application? Can you talk about some of the exterior improvements?
Absolutely. Now that we have a STUCO contractor... Now that we have a stucco contractor, the stucco would be the first step. We also have a masonry contractor. Plus, we'll redo the interior, but that won't be seen from the outside. We have a donor that has cared for the lawn all year so that it would look good for the neighborhood. And, you know, we've reached out to neighbors and asked them to come and help us, and we haven't had much response there. But anyway, so we're going to redo the exterior, the porches, those things that you see like on the porch pillars, the stucco would be redone there. And I would hope that, you know, with construction, they always say two weeks, and it's longer. But we're totally committed and would obviously support not having to come back and discuss it with you again and put the city through all of this. Anything else?
Thank you, Rondalee. And again, what's the ultimate goal? Would you like to have individuals living in the house? Can you talk about the ultimate goal?
It's a, well, obviously with the duplex, we'd have two renters, and we want it to be an income source if we need to pay back to, you know, for our donor with the equity. Plus, we want to going forward do other properties in the Midtown area. So it will be income producing with two renters. I've already had some interest in people renting it, actually.
Thank you. Councilmember Glasscock.
One quick question. I know you've kind of spoken to this already, but what is your dream timeline or what's worst-case scenario? What's worst-case scenario?
Well, my dream timeline is by next May or June. That we would be able to rent it.
What's worst-case scenario?
If we have a contractor that falls through, it could be closer into the fall.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, the contractors, they're hard to control.
Quick question for Chris again. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Should context. Going back to my concern, so let's say something isn't developed by May of this year. The property stands similarly as it stands now, very blighted on the outside. What are the tools the city has at our disposal come May?
We would re-energize the housing case and immediately put this back under condemnation consideration.
Okay, immediately? How long does immediately take?
The next time our Board of Code Standards and Appeals meets. So it would be within a month of that that we could put that back in front of them. I think a lot of that question would come down to status of a building permit and construction project. So if they were to begin construction, stall out on a permit, we would wait until that had kind of run its course and it was apparent that no more work was taking place and then energize that. If no permit is obtained at that point, no work has been done, then we would immediately go forward to put this back, bring this back in front of you.
So we could maybe have 30 days, try to bring it back before us, and then that could come back before us in a condemnation sentence?
So from the time we decided to re-energize it, we would probably say 30 days to our BCSA. After that, probably another 30 to 45 before it would be in front of City Council, just given schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We'll continue with public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all of the insight. I think and appreciate that so far the group from Midtown has done everything in a timely manner, obtained the property through probate and all of things, paid all of the back taxes. They removed seven dumpsters full of garbage from the inside and the outside. They all live in, you know, historic homes, so I think they understand what they're getting into and also appreciate it. So with that, I move to adopt the finding of the Historic Preservation Board and deny the demo permit. In support of this motion, I offer the following. This property is a historic resource and is important to the sense of our community, and stakeholders have recently cleaned up the property and continue to work to make it better.
Second.
Chris, weren't you looking for a receiving file? Return the property, code enforcement?
Yes, ma'am.
I think Councilmember, there may be confusion. On this item, the recommendation of staff is to close the public hearing, return it to regular code enforcement. There's another item coming up, but this is just this one.
Okay. Just kidding. I move to close the public hearing, return the property to regular code enforcement, thereby removing it from condemnation consideration.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Applicant Appeal of HPC 2025-8 condemnation and demolition permit for 1416 and 1418 North Park Place.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor. Councilmembers, Chris Labrum again. Ma'am, I got them a little out of order for you there because of our recommendation with the condemnation. Given your last action, MABCD would like to withdraw our appeal and the motion that you just made, Councilmember Ballard would apply.
Do you want me to read it again? Jennifer, do you want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move to adopt the findings of the Historic Preservation Board and deny the demolition permit. In support of this motion, I offer the following. This property is a historic resource and is important to our sense of community, and stakeholders have recently cleaned up the property to continue to make it better.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Applicant Appeal of HPC 2025-60.
Hello, good morning. Scott Waidell from the Planning Department, here to present this item. I believe we've got the PowerPoint showing for the prior case. So just a moment while we bring up the photos and everything. Here we go. Okay, very good. So this item is being heard today because it was deferred to this date. So this is an appeal of a decision by the Wichita Historic Preservation Board to deny a building permit for awnings to be installed at the Abla House, which is located at 102 and 104 North Pinecrest. The board determined that the proposed awnings would damage or destroy the historic building. The applicant is proposing to install awnings on the second floor of the building in order to keep water off the flat roof slash terraces slash patios on top of the first floor. The owner intends for the awnings to help protect the interior spaces below and to allow him to make any necessary repairs. In terms of the process, this item is being presented today because of a 2022 agreement between the City of Wichita and the Kansas Historic Preservation Officer. The agreement allows for local review of projects that affect historic places instead of having to send them up to Topeka. As part of the agreement, the appeal of the local review goes to the City Council. In terms of the property background, the building at 104 North Pinecrest is individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It was listed back in 2009. It was listed under criterions B and C, and that is for its association with the original owners, brothers Frank and Harvey Abla, and also for its notable architectural design and construction. So here is an aerial showing the location right at the corner of Douglas and Pinecrest. Here are some photos of the site and the surroundings. And then here are some images and graphics that were submitted by the applicant as part of their application to the Wichita Historic Preservation Board. Some of them show the interior damages, some of them show the exterior up on the roof slash terraces, and some are illustrations of the proposed awnings. Just kind of flip through these relatively quickly. So there are multiple terraces, so there are different groupings of photos. So here's the illustration that was submitted by the applicant at the previous City Council meeting, showing what the proposed awnings would look like, and they are horizontal lines on this image, so they kind of blend in with the rest of the exterior. Okay, here's the aerial again. So here's an overview of the process to date. Back in June, the applicant submitted an application for the Historic Preservation Board to review the proposed awnings project. Back in July 14th, on July 14th, HPB determined that the proposed project would damage or destroy historic property. On July 22nd, the applicant submitted an appeal to the city clerk. On August 12th, the City Council deferred this item in order to allow for another opportunity for the Historic Preservation Board to consider the case and for the applicant to provide additional details. On August 27th, MAPD and MABCD staff met to discuss the proposed project. MABCD staff advised that the applicant's proposed project would require a building permit and that a report from a structural engineer would be required as part of that building permit process. This information was subsequently relayed to the applicant to make sure that they were aware of it, and that was done on August 29th via email. On September 8th, the Wichita Historic Preservation Board considered the application again and recommended denial of the awnings. That vote was 4-0-1, so one abstention. During the discussion, the Historic Preservation Board members expressed concern that the applicant did not have a structural engineer or a licensed contractor to assist with the design and installation of the proposed awnings. Prior to making the motion, the HPB member who made that motion indicated a preference for the applicant to submit an application for the building permit with all the necessary accompanying information and that having the application information would be helpful for the HPB to evaluate this project. And there's a more complete dialogue contained in the notes which are attached to the staff report. So when reviewing a project, the Wichita Historic Preservation Board reviews it using the Secretary of Interior standards. Again, the board found that the permit would damage or destroy a historic place, and the notes are attached to the staff report. So just a quick note about the process, that this is a historic preservation appeal by the applicant, not a zoning item. So therefore, it's recommended that the City Council hear from the applicant who is in attendance and take public comment on the item. In terms of City Council action, you have a number of options. You can deny the permit by adopting the findings of the Wichita Historic Preservation Board, or you can determine that there's no feasible and prudent alternative, approve the building permit, and authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the Kansas State Historic Preservation Officer. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. I do have a question regarding this. This came before us not too long ago, and one of my concerns was, is this overburdenousome for a property owner, especially someone who's trying to keep historic buildings in our community? His biggest concern was water damage that has seeped into the interior of that home. And so I wanted to know, what's, when the applicant went back to the Historic Preservation Board, what was the interaction between the board and the property owner?
The interaction between the board and the property owner, I believe, I was not there, but in referring to the notes and talking with staff, the dialogue was about whether or not there was any new additional information. I think the applicant was able to share additional perspective on it. At the same time, though, the notes reflect from the conversation that members of the board were looking for perhaps more detailed information and especially that a contractor or a structural engineer would be involved in the project. So without that being the case, I think that contributed to the results of that meeting.
I have received a couple of emails regarding this property from neighbors in the area who are supportive of this property owner and trying to make sure that it, again, stays historic, but also does not continue to have further damage. So there, again, the emails that I have received have been supportive of Mr. Turman, and I don't know about the other council members. But I don't have any further questions for you, and I'll open it up for public comment, which will allow Mr. Turman to come up and speak.
Thank you. To the City Council members and Mayor Wu, I want to say thank you. Also want to give Brandon Johnson a shout out. It was his suggestion that took it back to the, to the board for reconsideration. Of course, the HPC and my position remains unchanged. If I do what the WHPB suggests, scaffolding and tarps, the cost for the scaffolding that we can best figure out will be needed adds $2,800 per month to this project, which I'm looking at two years. $67,000. And this does not include the labor that will be needed for replacing the tarps every two or three to four months. This balloons my budget by about $50,000. The blade style awning design I proposed can do a better job than scaffolding and tarps for much less. I'm expecting to cover the decks with blade style awnings for about $20,000. That includes the labor. I mean, it's a very simple design. So, you know, this is money that I don't have, and it's money that would be taken away from the project itself. I need confidence. I need confidence to know that when I open up the ceiling to my dining room, the ceilings to some of the kitchens or part of the kitchens, to a couple of the bedrooms, that I have a solid surface above and that... I've worked with tarps all my life. I've been raised in rentals and construction, and tarps, you know, they have a purpose. But do you know what? Tarps have not improved over time. The tarps for this project will be a disaster to the beautiful hardwood floors underneath. In August 14, August 2014, I applied for replacement insurance. The insurance came in and they did quite an extensive valuation. It took several months. It was a property that they, they didn't know much about. They didn't know how to figure it out. But one thing was certain. The hardwood floors, the quality, the design, the way they put together, replacement value on the hardwood floors alone is over a million dollars. My insurance company was also really disappointed in their suggestion, calling it lackadaisical. The scaffolding, the expense of tarps, you know, just the fact that in the Kansas winds, the driving winds that drive rain and storms, it's not going to suffice for what we need to do for, to protect the interiors. And please remember, I've offered to remove the scaffolding when this project is done. For the Abla House itself, it provides the city with more than just property tax revenue. It also provides sales tax and occupancy tax revenues, as we also operate it as an Airbnb. I believe on this problem, unfortunately, the WHPB is out of touch. You know, they deal with large construction companies that work for hotel chains, that have large budgets, large staffs, coming in with great presentations, digitally enhanced and beautiful, and I don't have those kind of budgets to make this work. And I feel what they're forgetting is the individual homeowner who lives in the house, who's studied the problem, in my case, for 25 years, looking for an economical, good solution. In other words, my favorite phrase in something like this is making lemonade out of lemons. Last, and something that's extremely important to me, is the respect to my neighbors. They have always been supportive for the last 25 years, and I honestly can't imagine anything more horrible than sticking up a bunch of scaffolding and shredded tarps due to wind damage while this process goes through. And I ask you, please, help me stop the bleeding by providing me this surface so I can start a comprehensive terrace project, and I can do this with confidence. So, thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Turman. I don't see any questions. I just wanted to ask you really quickly. You mentioned how long you've been the property owner of this historic building. And again, we don't want this to be overburdensome for you, because again, you're doing it on your dime. You're not asking for taxpayers to help you with this.
I am not.
You are just asking to be able to renovate your building so that it doesn't have further damage from rain. And so I really appreciate you continuing to make sure that we have this housing stock in our community, but also one that has historic significance to the city of Wichita. And I commend you for trying to do this on your dime. And as you mentioned, you're asking and pleading to this council that you don't want to continue bleeding and that you're just asking to, again, be able to utilize your home. And so these are just my comments, and I, again, from the last conversation where you were before us, I wanted to make sure that you could move forward with your project. But again, it went back to the Preservation Board. But ultimately, this council can make that decision. So thank you very much for coming back yet again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I was probably going to save my comments to the end, but since you're up here, I'll speak to you directly. I don't disagree with one thing you said. I think everything you said was pointed and accurate. I think this is crazy, this is coming for us. When I looked at that background slide and that you started this process months ago and that we have been the burden that while rains continue to fall in the area, and your house has probably seen more flooding this year than probably any other year, because of the delay of this body, your situation, your home, has gotten worse. So on behalf of the citizens of Wichita, I apologize for that, and government should not be making it harder for you to make your house livable and to maintain your property. I think the request was out of touch. I think it was unreasonable. The request of $50,000 more to be able to do the recommendation from the board, again, is out of touch and unreasonable. And so I will not be supportive of the original recommendation today, the alternative to determine that there are no prudent or feasible alternatives. So again, I apologize, and thank you for being here, and thank you for standing up for your property, especially as a homeowner.
Thank you. I do have one more thing. I sent you around a picture. In the process, the planners that I've worked with, they've been great. I mean, and one of the suggestions that they said, you know, if you could come up with a picture of a similar building. And so I didn't think this would fall into place the way it was, but on the southwest corner of Central and Emporia, there is a building that is very similar in architectural style. It's got the rounded corners. It has the bands that wrap around the building. And on this building, there are what I call awnings made of permanent materials, protecting the doorways, walkways, those kind of things. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention as it's so close and something that might be a good comparison to what I'm doing now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turman. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and again, I feel awful for your situation. I concur with my colleagues. I think you should have your awnings. The comment that you made that you were concerned about your neighbors and that they would have to look at the scaffolding, that was not lost on me, that even during all of this strife that you're having, you're still trying to be a good neighbor and a good Wichitaan. So I will be supportive however this works out of you getting the awnings that you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turman. We'll continue to open it up for public comment if anyone from the public would like to speak.
Bet you're tired of me. Actually, I have some questions, because I tend to side with the Historic Preservation Board. And I don't, sitting in the audience, I don't have a very good idea of... I love this building, and I know this building is beloved in the city of Wichita by many, many people. And I trust their judgment, but I don't have the full picture. Like, I literally don't have pictures. I saw a little flash of what it would look like. I don't, but I don't really have a full understanding. And I'm personally concerned that it would be aesthetically damaged in some way. I also am very concerned about the water damage on the building. Now, another possibility, I think the building is so popular in Wichita that people might fundraise to help you.
Sorry, ma'am?
Yeah.
Jennifer Magagna, attorney.
Yeah, just under ordinance, Mayor, any speaker's comments are to be directed only to the bench.
Oh, only to the bench, okay. So, well, I mean, I just have questions about it. I'd love to talk to him about it, although I'm talking to you, because I do, in this city, there have been so many sad changes made to our historic buildings that Wichita hardly looks like Wichita anymore. It just looks like these new, soulless, very plain and very unattractive new buildings built with poor-quality materials that probably aren't going to stand the test of time, you know? Ten years, maybe, maybe 15. So I'm always concerned about updates, and I care a lot about this building. I also care about this homeowner and what he's been going through. I do think that there would be enough support in Wichita that people might, like, want to contribute to the best option, working with him and the Historic Preservation Board and public opinion. You know, it's possible. I think it's a very, very popular, beloved building in Wichita. And I think a lot of Wichitaans really want to hang on to what we still have since, you know, the Crown Uptown is in danger of being torn down, and so many other historic buildings in Wichita have been torn down or altered in such a way that they don't resemble what they once were. So that's my comment. Thank you.
We'll continue with public comment. All right, we will close public comment and bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Johnson's district.
Thank you, Mayor. My specific concerns have actually been addressed, so I would move that the council determine there are no prudent or feasible alternatives to the request, override the decision of the Historic Preservation Board, authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the Kansas Historic Preservation Officer, and approve the building permit.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Vice Mayor Johnston. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public exigency ratification for compressor replacement at the Wichita Ice Center.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works and Utilities. The first two items I have for you is a request for ratification of the public exigency for replacement of compressor at the Wichita Ice Center. So at full capacity, the Wichita Ice Center operates two ice rinks, Olympic and N H L, National Hockey League size. The sports facilities company who's the operator of the Wichita Ice Center was building ice on the Olympic rink on September ninth, and one of the two ammonia compressors failed. The operator contacted an ammonia-certified contractor, Advanced Mechanical Solutions, and A M S determined that the compressor could not be repaired without a major rebuild. Presently, the Ice Center is operating with only the N H L rink available, and the operator is making scheduling adjustments to accommodate users, which is one of the impetus for the public exigencies that we can get them back online with both rinks as soon as possible. After receiving notice of the failure, city staff solicited quotes and schedules from A M S for various options. The rebuild option is approximately 13 weeks, $65,000. Standard replacement, meaning standard shipping and manufacturing time, is 13 to 15 weeks, just over $56,000. Expedited replacement would cut that almost in half at a little bit more cost of just over $60,000. Due to limited parts availability and intensive labor, rebuilding the compressor would cost more and take longer than full replacement. Waiting an additional month to formally bid for this replacement would incur additional scheduling impacts and possible cancellation of events, including a youth hockey tournament, high school hockey league games, figure skating practices, and extended holiday hours. Again, the reason for the public exigency request to the manager and our request to you today. The expedited shipping, which also includes expedited manufacturing of the new compressor option facilitates replacement completion as early as mid-November. All associated costs are being shared with the Law Department for consideration in ongoing legal action related to premature equipment failures at the Ice Center. The total anticipated cost of replacing the compressor is $60,128. Funding is available in the ongoing city facility improvements for 2025 project budget, identified in the adopted C I P, and will be financed with general obligation bonds. Staff recommends city council affirm and ratify the city manager's public exigency approval to replace the failed ammonia compressor at the Ice Center, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second compressor that has failed? Am I correct in that, Gary?
So in July, thank you for asking that, and I thought someone might. In July of 2023, both of the compressors had a failure. So there's two parts to these compressors, and I'm not going to stand up here and act like the expert, but I got the right information from staff. So the top end of both compressors failed in July of 2023, and were repaired at that time. Now it's the bottom end of one of the compressors that has failed. There is normal maintenance and upkeep on these compressors and the equipment just as recently as a couple of months ago. An evaluation of the compressor showed everything that was fine, so these things can happen rather quickly.
Okay. What equipment do we have up there? Major pieces of equipment that have not failed in the past four or five years?
So since 2022, in July, in 2018, the original 1996 chiller plant had failed. In 2019, replacement of the chiller plant was completed. Since that time, basically, all of the ice-making equipment has been repaired or replaced over the last several years.
Okay, do we anticipate any other issues going forward?
Well, hopefully not. The, you know, at this time, obviously, take a look at the other compressor. Does not appear to be any issues at this time. We've been fairly fortunate, all things considered, that we haven't had any issues since March of 2024. That was when kind of the last pieces of the ice-making equipment were repaired or replaced at that time. Right now, we don't anticipate any further issues, but we also didn't expect this one either.
Do we have any, do we have a third party come in and check it out after it fails in that way? Or is that more internal that we look at?
So the operator, again, they have A M S come in and do preventative maintenance to do checks on all the equipment. They had done so just recently, again, even on these compressors, in spite of what happened with the failure. So from our standpoint and what we're, staff works with them, I think they're doing a good job with annual maintenance plan.
Okay, thank you.
Can you talk about some of the challenges in renting out this space now with this little delay?
I might go, the best information I've got, I can go back to, is, again, the potential scheduling impacts or the types of events that could be canceled is a youth hockey tournament, high school hockey league games, figure skating practices, and extended holiday hours. So we begin with the expedited approach to getting the new compressor hope to be back online as early as mid-November. Anything beyond that will cause additional impacts to scheduling, for sure.
Thank you, Gary. And this question is actually for Jennifer. Since we're still in ongoing legal action, there are very limited questions that we can ask, but can you just share that we, what's the status report that you can share that's public?
Sure. The city is pursuing all avenues for damages against, two defendants in this case. This item is part of the original design installation, and it is included and will be specifically addressed in that litigation?
Thank you. I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Glasscock's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move that the city council affirm and ratify the city manager's public exigency approval to replace the failed ammonia compressor at the Wichita Ice Center.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Overestimate bid for biological nutrient removal for Plant One.
Mayor and councilmembers, Gary Janson, again. This item will look familiar to you, and I'm going to hit on some of the things, same things we talked about earlier, but is a request for overestimate bid for B N R improvements for Plant One. Back in March of 2024, the city council approved a design agreement for the biological nutrient removal program improvements, which includes multiple projects. Construction has been divided into several individual packages at Treatment Plans One and Two, and for some improvements for the cowskin interceptor sewer. On September 12th, bids were opened for the final construction package at Plant One. This project will upgrade older control systems and electronic controls at Plant One. And again, this is the last project of the program to be bid. The only bid received exceeded the engineer's estimate by just over $1.3 million, or 12% of the estimate. The higher bids are the result of working on critical, active infrastructure, short shutdown duration requirements, and continued inflationary impacts on material costs and labor. I might mention, again, what I talked about before, and our belief why there was only one bidder has a lot to do with the current construction market. We did make some additional effort to reach out to contractors. This contractor, a senior approval today that will be awarded the bid, is doing all of the work, all the remaining work on the Plant Two project packages, all the remaining packages tied to the Plant Two primary B N R improvements. Accepting the bid will allow the project to proceed without requiring it to rebid, thus eliminating a potential increase in the cost, delay of start, and possible loss of funding for the improvements. In accordance with Charter Ordinance 228, staff recommends the city council approve acceptance of the lowest bid. Our vice estimate has been prepared to reflect the increased cost of constructing the improvements. Funding is available in the B N R project budget of just over $387 million, approved by the city council on March 5th, 2024. I might mention, again, based on the question that was asked before, we are, this funding is from availability within that full budget. Obviously, we've done, staff's done a really good job working with the contractor and our owners' rep to value engineer- our owner's rep to value engineer some savings into multiple projects, which is helping us out here. We will, we will have the first change order on the project coming to the council relatively soon for improvements related to the Package Two projects, somewhere in the neighborhood of three million dollars. A lot of it has to do with the fact that we're working on an older plant, right? So, and I'll just tell you real quick, kind of what that's about, the large clarifiers that we're making improvements to, the ones that we're putting the covers on for odor control, once you get those drained and determine the condition of the mechanisms there is what's driving some of that additional cost, not something that could have been known beforehand. That'll come to the council soon at some point. That still fits within this budget. There could come a time when we start to push the limit, but again, we've got some contingency in place if we, if at any point in time we need to exceed that, but that's something that we would bring back to the council. With having said all that, staff recommends city council approve the acceptance of the lowest bid, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is one of the more odorous sewage treatment plants that we have. I know a lot of people in the neighborhood surrounding are eager for this project to be complete. Is this going to slow down our timeline at all, maybe a couple of weeks, or?
I don't think so, and especially, it helps to have, it does help to have the same contractor. As far as mobilization, where they're at, the work that they're doing down there, I think that's valued to us at this point, but we don't expect to see any impact, any significant impact on schedule.
Okay, the odor control at Plant Two is, if we stay on the timeline, should be complete about this time next year.
Correct.
Is that where we are with Plant One as well?
Approximately, yes. I think it'd probably be later in, towards the end of next year, or even into probably the first or second quarter of 2027 likely, with where we're at right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary, you mentioned that this project right now is at three hundred eighty-seven million dollars. However, a change order is coming, it's still within the budget.
Correct.
How much have you budgeted within the three eighty-seven that will be fluctuating based off of predictable or, not predictable, but rather anticipated buffers?
I'm not sure that I can give you a hard number, but within all projects, we generally try to have some contingency, knowing that the nature of construction, regardless of what we put into the design efforts, there's like, could be some unforeseen conditions like this. What we did, I might mention again, that I think has really helped, obviously, is since the first, the first of the big projects, Packages Two and Three were bid, we've had a very robust engagement with the contractor, with our owner's rep and staff, to do everything we could for value engineering to save costs. So, so we've realized considerable savings, and I apologize, I don't have that number, just from those bids even, that allow us some additional contingency to be within the project. So we don't, we, you know, we don't always have a set number when we put the budgets together, but we do want to make sure that we can accommodate changes as they come along.
Does it tend to be a percentage, like a one?
Yeah, and, and, and it does, and I don't know that I can necessarily give you a hard number, but by economy of scale, as a project gets bigger, the percentage is smaller. But we can, and, and you've probably seen some of the items we've brought to you before as far as approval of change orders, that changing that limit, that doesn't mean it changed the budget, but generally, you can look at, a project like this could be up to five percent. You know, we've talked about on the water treatment plant, that we're still only around one and a half to two percent. I think with the change order that'll come forward on this project, it'll be in that same area, two to two and a half percent.
And while you mentioned the water treatment plant, since we're talking about major utility investments, three hundred eighty-seven million for BNR, can you remind us again regarding the water treatment plant and how that is going, as I believe we should be getting the keys to that by the end of this year?
We're currently, for the water treatment plant, we're currently undergoing performance testing, and right now, the projected schedule for completion of that is around the first of December.
Remind us the dollar amount for this investment again, the water treatment?
Probably, I think our overall budget now is just over five hundred and fifty million dollars.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you.
Appreciate your team. Again, major investments by the city of Wichita to both water and sewer, which are the two critical aspects of public works, and we appreciate that this is happening. And again, Councilmember Hoheisel alluded to this earlier, but it does help reduce the odor that is produced out of that plant to help the residents in that area, as well as travelers who drive by District Three. We will open it up for public comment.
Good morning. Steven Ahmad, five four zero zero, East Street, First Street North. Now, I may be a little uninformed on how these funds are distributed to these contractors for these projects. However, my recommendation being, given they only have the one contractor who has gone over the estimated budget and just cited market forces for those kinds of things, I would recommend if any funds are dispersed to the contractor before the completion of the project, that we withhold any overestimate funds until the absolute completion of the project on time with a set time of, you know, the end of calendar year twenty-seven, or twenty-six, my apologies, assuming no extensions given with approval from the council on a well-informed, a well-informed decision basis, rather than just handing out when they ask for it. Thank you.
We'll continue with public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel, this is in your district.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do believe we have the ability within a lot of money to see exactly what they need to do, and there is some flexibility as far as the spending goes there. So I would like to recommend that the city council approve acceptance of the lowest bid. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Twenty twenty-six Payment Standards Housing Choice Voucher Program.
Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Jean Crizero. I am the Housing Choice Voucher Program Manager, and we're going to talk about the twenty twenty-six Payment Standard Housing for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. The Quality Housing and Work Responsibility Act of nineteen ninety-eight requires housing authorities to establish a housing choice voucher payment standard between ninety and a hundred and ten percent of the fair market rent, published by the, by HUD for applicable bedroom and unit sizes. The payment standard is used to calculate the amount of maximum subsidy paid to landlords and includes an allowance for tenant-paid utilities. The QHWRA included a provision that does not allow tenants initially receiving assistance to pay more than forty percent of adjusted monthly income for rent and utilities. On January first of twenty twenty-five, the Wichita Housing Authority was mandated to implement small-area FMR. The WHA jurisdiction includes Cedric, Butler, Harvey Counties outside of the city of Newton. SEFMR regulation sets the fair market rents at the ZIP code level. The Wichita Housing Authority must set the payment standard at ninety to a hundred and ten percent of the SEFMR for each ZIP code. On August twenty-second of twenty twenty-five, HUD published a notice of the SEFMR for twenty twenty-six. The FMR is calculated at the fortieth percentile of rents in each ZIP code, and allowance for utilities is included in the FMR. The twenty twenty-six payment standards are consistent with the city's comprehensive housing policy, specifically the components related to affordability, availability, and neighborhood stability. Payment standards are also in accordance with the departmental goal to increase and preserve supply of housing to maintain affordability of residents earning fifty percent or less of the area median income. The area median income for a family of four is currently ninety-three thousand eight hundred. The twenty twenty-six payment standards are calculated for all units within the Wichita Housing Authority jurisdiction and are set at varying percentages between ninety and a hundred and ten percent of the twenty twenty-six FMR based on bedroom size and participant success in leasing units of different bedroom sizes. SEFMRs are designed to provide participating families the ability to lease units in higher opportunity areas. Higher opportunity areas are defined by Freddie Mac and Opportunity three sixty as areas that provide housing stability, education, health and well-being, economic security, and mobility. These areas often have a higher cost of living. The only payment standards that will decrease for twenty twenty-six are in ZIP codes in which there are no existing tendencies. As such, there will be no negative impact on any participating families. All ZIP codes that have active tendencies will see an increase in the payment standard. However, actual rent approved is determined through the rent reasonableness process as required by HUD. Extensive analysis of leasing success rates and, excuse me, participant rent burden in each ZIP code was used to establish the recommended schedule. It's on the, and you should have this in your packet, but, but here it is again. Financial considerations. There's no impact to the general fund. Analysis, analysis demonstrates that setting payment standards in accordance with the attached schedule will increase the overall unit cost by three point eight percent, but will be necessary to ensure adequate supply of housing units for participants to use the voucher. Legal considerations. Establishment of payment standards based on the small-area FMRs is required by regulation for the WHA. Recommendation. It is recommended that the Wichita Housing Authority Board approve the twenty twenty-six Payment Standard Schedule for the Housing Choice Voucher Program to be effective January first of twenty twenty-six for all housing assistance payment contracts and contract renewals effective thereafter. I stand for questions.
Eugene, Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Jean, I appreciate you coming up here. It sounds like a lot of this is mandated by HUD. What exactly do we have any power over here in regards to this program?
I mean, we can set the payment standards according to the, the FMR the face set. We can set ours for the Housing Authority anywhere between ninety and a hundred and ten percent of what HUD establishes as the FMR. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's about what we have control over. We, we only have so much money, and we try to make sure that our money goes as far as it can, because we want to make sure that we are supporting as many families as possible. To give an example, just due to flat, flat funding and increased rents, we were, we, we, the number of people that we were able to support from January first of twenty twenty-four, so a year since this has been implemented, we've only been able, we've reduced that number by three hundred and eighty-two families. So the more money we spend, the fewer families we're able to help. So we try to be very careful and conscious of, of, of the clients that we serve and how the numbers that we put in place affect our clients.
Yes, if I remember correctly, it was due to the, the rise in rent, the rising cost of rent, and just a set amount of money that we have, we weren't able to help all those families actually find housing because the, the vouchers were not enough to help them find the housing. That's why there was a reduction in the number, but an increase in the amount per voucher. When looking at this, do we look at supportive services? What is in the area for these ZIP codes? Does that impact the rent in particular or the availability of vouchers to be used in those ZIP codes?
I'm not sure really, really how to, how to answer that. You know, HUD sets, you know, sets the FMR based on the fortieth, I think I said it was the fortieth percentile, yeah, forty percentile of rents in each ZIP code, and it's determined on, you know, what, what Freddie Mac and Opportunity three sixty determines as an area of higher opportunity. So, so they set that, and as far as what, what it used to be, is it used to be a metropolitan level, they used to do it by the metropolitan level versus the ZIP code level, and what was happening is landlords were artificially inflating the rents for not just voucher holders, but for non-voucher holders. For instance, in six seven two one four, back in twenty twenty-four, a one-bedroom payment standard for, was eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Well, I mean, it was eight hundred and fifteen payment standard for six seven two oh five. And if you bought a house in six seven two one four, that identical house in six seven two oh five isn't going to sell for the same amount. So that's where HUD's coming in, and that's where they're, they're saying, they're looking at each ZIP code individually and looking at what, what the, they're looking at the, it's calculated the forty, fortieth percentile of rents in each ZIP code, so that's how, where they get their base from. And then we go from there to determine where we're going to set our rents. But, you know, as far as what else we offer them, I mean, I mean, if there's a place, I don't know how else to answer that. I mean, Sally, there's. Councilmember Hoheisel, member of council. The other aspect of this is the rent reasonableness review. So that is, where's the, payment standard set the maximum amount of subsidy, but when we determine the actual rent allowed for a particular unit, there are thirteen factors to get, that go into that comparability study, and it is the age of the unit, the square footage, amenities, things like that, that can bolster rents in areas, whether they're furnished, whether, things like that. So there are thirteen different factors that go into that calculation on a unit-by-unit basis. Setting the maximum subsidy, which is what's happening here today, is that requirement to set between ninety and a hundred and ten.
Okay, so we, we still have the power, like voucher by voucher, to go between ninety and a hundred and ten?
No, once we set the payment standard for that ZIP code, that's the highest subsidy level, but the amount of rent that can be approved is on a unit-by-unit basis. That's, that subsidy level doesn't say that the landlord can't ask more than that amount in rent, but that requirement, that, that, the way that the voucher works is the client's going to pay thirty percent of their monthly adjusted income, plus any amount that exceeds that payment standard, and that combined can't exceed forty percent. So sometimes when they ask for more than the payment standard, because maybe their unit actually deserves it, it may make it so that particular unit isn't available to that household because they have very low income to support that overage. So it is on a unit-by-unit basis where we determine the maximum amount of rent by comparing that unit to three comparables, as close as we can, comparables, to ensure we're not overpaying in rent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sally, maybe the question's for you. Just how much money from the federal government exactly goes into housing vouchers?
Sure, the program combined with housing assistance and admins, about twenty-five million dollars, and that has, you know, a one point two to one point five economic impact to our community. So it's, it's a tremendous program for our community.
Thank you for being good stewards of the twenty-five million dollars to help families in need. I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see no one from the public. I'll bring it back to the bench. With that, I will move that the Wichita Housing Authority Board approve the twenty twenty-six Payment Standard Schedule for the Housing Choice Voucher Program to be effective on January first, twenty twenty-six, for all new housing assistance payments, contracts, and annual reexaminations effective thereafter.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes. Seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Combined public hearing, twenty twenty-six Annual Agency Plan and twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty Capital Fund Grant Five-Year Action Plan.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Sally Stang with the Housing and Community Services Department for the record. The item I have for you today is that twenty twenty-six Annual Agency Plan and Capital Fund Estimated Budgets. So, public housing authorities are required to prepare an annual agency plan every year and a five-year plan every fifth year, which was completed last year. Currently, the housing authority has a hundred and fifty-seven units that changes daily, so actually, I think it's a hundred and fifty-six since this was put together, as we're selling off those public housing units, and three thousand five hundred and one housing choice, emergency housing vouchers, and mainstream vouchers in the portfolio. Our jurisdiction includes Sedgwick County, Butler County, and Harvey County outside of the city of Newton. The annual agency plan documents include method of rent calculation, general operating policies and procedures, and a statement, statement of capital improvements. The Capital Fund Program provides funding for capital improvements to those public housing units only. So we have a rigorous plan schedule. We're required to have a forty-five public review and comment period. We published the plan on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and that public comment period ends today with this public hearing. We conducted a resident advisory board review on September eighteenth. We have had difficulty year after year trying to get participants to.
We have had difficulty year after year trying to get participants to participate in a standing RAB board, so we invite every participant in both programs to participate in that meeting. Then we have the combined public hearing today, and we have until October 18th to submit the plan to HUD. The Public Housing Program continues to sell off those single-family homes from its portfolio. Once they're all sold, the Public Housing Program will terminate. Sales proceeds will fund any new, it can be any new Section 8 project-based voucher-assisted housing, including the permanent supportive housing on the Second Lake campus. The construction for the RAB conversion of the four multifamily senior properties concluded in 2025, as the final project, Greenway Manor, received its CFO and will be fully leased by year-end. We're very excited. They actually started leasing units last week. In 2024, the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program, we assisted 3,821 families comprised of 8,423 individuals, with rent assistance totaling over $21 million. The average assistance per household is $5,647, and their average income is $13,945 per year. 51.27% of the households were elderly or disabled. There were 4,127 dependents, and 917 households came from homelessness. Just to show, we have various programs that are assisting with homelessness. The VASH Program, Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, that one's a little bit different in that it is specialized funding defined by HUD that has its own rules. We have the Foster Youth Independence Vouchers, which assist youth age 18 to 24 who have aged out of the foster care system. We had 147 emergency housing vouchers. Those were issued during the ARPA period. We had 10 with refugee preference and 441 under our homeless preference program. And then I've provided a listing of all of the agencies and programs that we're partnering with to provide case management for all of those folks. So, Congress appropriated level funding from 2024 to '25 for housing assistance payments and administrative fees. Level funding, although not a cut in funding, does not account for those rent and utility cost increases, which results in the reduction in the number of families that can be served. Jean touched on this, right? January 1st, 2024, we had just under 3,100 people being assisted, and on September 1st of '25, it was 2,716. And that's just because of rent increases and utility expense increases. That's a reduction of nearly 400 families from the program and a reduction of $26,747 per month in administrative fees to support staff administering the program. The proposed to HUD budgets from the House and the Senate right now propose drastic cuts to the Housing Choice Voucher administrative fees, up to 43%. So, we see the House at 43%, the Senate at 16%. It's going to land somewhere in between. So, if we're talking, even if it lands at 20%, that's one in five. So, not in a good position right now. So, some, just some highlights. We promoted self-sufficiency. That's always one of our goals, and we increased our family self-sufficiency program participation by 12%. We had 143 Housing Choice Voucher and Public Housing participants participate in the Individual and Family Development Program in 2024. In 2024, 156 youth participated in the Way to Work Summer Youth Employment Program from those programs. And to date, we've been awarded in 2025 an additional 28 tenant protection vouchers to replace some of the public housing units, and we are expecting another 68. The Emergency Housing Voucher Program has been fully utilized since early 2022, and it was given a utilization presented in one of the top 10 in the nation, which we are very proud of. Foster Youth Independence Program assisted 20 persons who aged out of foster care in the past five years. The HCB Homeless Preference enabled 488 persons to secure permanent housing since January of 2020. And the program conducted landlord outreach and provided fair housing training to 51 individuals at the Wichita Housing Conference in April 2025. So, proposed changes in the Section 8 Administrative Plan. We are proposed to update the PHA policy requirements for the HPP preference to ensure there's a case management commitment. All documents to determine eligibility are provided, and a written commitment from a landlord. Some of, a lot of this stems to, we learned a lesson this year. And if you remember, back in December, the council approved the ERA Bridge Program. It was at a time when we had no vouchers to issue, and we prioritized all of those referrals that were on the waiting list for a homeless preference voucher to be paid out of ERA funds. Staff spent months going through 238 referrals to only have 23, Lisa. 23 months and months of time trying to determine eligibility. We are required, especially for homeless preference, to follow the same regulations in context and eligibility. Unfortunately, that just caused harm to people who are waiting and waiting. So, our reasoning behind making sure we have a commitment that when we receive a referral, it's actually going to go to a housing placement. The next one is HUD is eliminating the EHB funding. When that was issued in 2021, the grant agreements included funding through 2030. HUD came out about six months ago and said that's being cut off in 2026. And so, in order to not terminate the assistance of those persons who are currently housed under EHB, adding a preference that will allow them to convert to a regular voucher. A new homeless preference for the Home TBRA Program. This will ensure that persons assisted under the Home TBRA Direct-to-Housing Encampment Decommissioning Pilot Project can continue to receive rent assistance if needed. This council, with the annual action plan for the Community Development Program, set aside funding so that we had a new source of funding to try and house people directly from encampments. The challenge is it's one year of funding, and we're oftentimes dealing with folks that have been on the streets for many years, and only having one year of funding could cycle them back to homelessness if we don't have a path for those who need it after that first year. Due to the executive orders related to the DEI references, the refugee referral preference is being removed, and those families can be referred and served under the homeless preference program as they meet HUD's definition of homeless. And referrals will continue to be received from the International Rescue Committee, who is being connected to the continuum of care. Voucher terms and extensions. We've updated the policy to cover regulatory changes, mandating that the initial voucher term for mainstream and foster youth vouchers be 120 days. No choice there. We've updated the PHA policy chart to indicate that the city of Wichita ID can be used to determine legal ID for adults. Enforcing owner compliance, clarifying, updated, added language to clarify in the policy that we have no choice but to abate housing assistance payments that are not corrected within 24 hours for exigent health and safety items, or 30 days for all other deficiencies, even if the deficiencies are caused by the tenant, in accordance with the federal regulations. We added the ability to use other resources to perform that rent reasonableness review. We subscribe to a service. Sometimes they don't have accurate or enough comparables. The way our policy was written in the past, we only use that service. We're just adding that flexibility that we can use other methods to find comparable units in cases when we can't. We ran across that this year with the Affordable Housing Fund. Large enterprises purchased multiple public housing properties, six bedrooms. We couldn't find enough six bedrooms to do comparables. So, it caused a little bit of a challenge. We have updated, are recommending updating the policy to enter into memorandings of understandings with agencies to provide referrals for the mainstream voucher program. Mainstream vouchers is a separate source of funding. They're very specifically for people that are non-elderly, non-disabled, with first priority to those who are Medicaid waiver eligible. So, these are folks that might be going into assisted living without having another potential resource when they are able to have independent living. Just solidifying that the agencies will enter into an MOU to provide those referrals. Updated the PHA policy to indicate that submission of the request for tenancy approval documents must be complete, and only fully completed packets are going to be processed. Getting partial processed just causes headache and chaos. Updating a repayment policy. Previously, our repayment policy, now someone goes into repayment when they didn't timely report a change in their income. We are mandated to have them pay that money back that was overpaid on their behalf. Our previous policy said if they were late, they were terminated. Now, we're saying, okay, let's at least, if you pay it off, we don't necessarily have to terminate you. So, and then we added multiple changes throughout the project-based voucher chapter that were regulatory, but then we also added the project-based voucher exhibits for the 11 contracts that we executed in 2025, aligning with that Affordable Housing Fund. So, you'll see that in there. We, you know what? It's not in here. I apologize. We did receive public comment. We hadn't received none from the resident advisory board. We had received one from SAC, which had misinterpreted the Housing First Evolution preference. We responded to that one. And then more recently, on 10/2, we received a letter from the Coalition to end homelessness in Wichita-Sedgwick County with comments regarding the plan. Based on the Coalition's comments, several non-substantive changes to verbiage have been made to further clarify policy or typographical errors, and those responses were sent to you on Friday. Based on the Coalition's comments, that we recommend one substantive change to the plan that wasn't part of what was originally published, and that is to retitle the limited referral-based homeless preference to just limited referral-based preferences, and increase the cap from 15 to 20%. This would include taking referrals for people who are literally homeless, formerly homeless under the Move On Strategy, reentry transitional housing Move On Strategy, and FYI from FSS. Our reasoning behind that is we, as a PHA, have to address multiple priorities in the community, and to not want to be able to assist, for example, URM's reentry program because they don't meet the definition of homeless, I think is an error, right? If people have finished a program like that coming from Department of Corrections, we don't want them to turn around after six months and end up on the street. And so, this just broadens that ability to be able to include these additional. The other is we are really prioritizing the Move On Strategy. People in a Move On Strategy are not literally homeless right now, but the idea is if we move them on to a voucher, that opens up a spot in that permanent supportive housing program that has identified wraparound intensive services. So, being able to move someone into a voucher that is sitting in a permanent supportive housing slot will actually then open up that slot behind them, right? Because the voucher program, the funding we get from HUD for administrative fees does not include case management, and we don't have the capacity to be able to provide case management for 452 homeless preference persons. So, a response to each comment was sent to the Coalition yesterday. We do have to cover, as the Wichita Housing Authority is disposing of all of its public housing units, we are not expecting any 2026 to 2030 Capital Fund Grants. So, that one was easy. There is no impact to the general fund. Development and submittal of the annual agency plan and capital fund program five-year plan is required by federal regulation to continue to receive program funding. So, it is recommended that the Wichita Housing Authority Board close the combined public hearing on the Wichita Housing Authority 2026 Annual Agency Plan and 2026-2030 Capital Fund Five-Year Action Plan, approve the plans with any amendments made during the public hearing, and authorize the necessary signatures to certify the documents for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sally. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions here. How many Home TBRA vouchers total in this plan compared to last year?
Well, the Home TBRA comes out of the Community Development Funds. We just received the grant agreements for other CD programs about three weeks ago, and we are just starting to launch the Home TBRA program. We put $1.7 million in home funds aside. That is enough for just under 300 individuals to be housed.
How much is that compared to last year's?
We have never done Home TBRA before. This is definitely a new venture.
Okay. How do we advertise this? Is it just typical?
The plan?
Yeah.
Yes. No, well, we're not allowed to use for this in particular. Very specifically, we can't use wichita.gov as the city's official newspaper, but although we did publish it there too. We did publish it on wichita.gov. We put ads in the paper in Butler County, Harvey County, as well as the Wichita Eagle. It was sent out through the Coalition's bi-weekly newsletter. We held a meeting on 9/2. We attended the Coalition's general membership meeting and did a presentation. That presentation was then sent out to everyone on their distribution list on 9/4, and then it was again on nine, two weeks, the next two-week cycle. So, it has definitely been out there.
Yeah, yeah, that's interesting. Yesterday, we have been receiving, I think, at least two dozen emails.
26?
Yeah, since last night, asking about this and also asking us to delay. What, you said there's a hard deadline of October 18th to submit this. Would a delay put that in jeopardy?
Yes.
Okay. Can you give me the HUD definition of homeless?
It's actually very, very long. It is actually very, very long. As far as the voucher program, we don't define that in the plan because we rely on the Coalition, not only the Sedgwick County Coalition, but the Balance of State Coalition. So, those who get referred under the homeless preference have to be in the HMIS system and put in there by those two organizations for us to consider them for the homeless.
Okay, so that's just straight homeless. That's not in danger of becoming homeless.
Correct. This is, correct. We are not talking at risk of homelessness at this point.
Okay. Is there an increase in administrative funding here? You talked about 17, the 43% reduction.
Yeah, no.
So, we're just trying to ride that out the best we can?
That's exactly right. And that is some of why, some of the changes that we're recommending, is we are anticipating that coming. It's hard enough now. You know, HUD issues, they determine what our administrative fees. Now, mind you, we only get paid the day somebody moves in. So, all of that pre-work, we get nothing from anywhere for that pre-work. So, we are paid an administrative, per-unit rate for each unit under contract on the first of the month. If someone moves in on the second, we don't get paid for that one. If they never move in at all, we never get paid for anything associated with that. And they set that dollar amount up, but then each year, Congress and the appropriations is never enough to pay it, and so it gets prorated. So, we get a prorated amount. We've been operating it between 88 and 90% for the last couple of years. Now, what will happen, depending on what appropriations, it's going to be set at, you know, potentially 16 to 43% proration brought down. So, no, there's no additional money coming in, and we're trying to adjust for dealing with operating this program even more lean.
So, when you referred to the almost 300 vouchers that we had tried to get people in last year, and we had success with?
23.
23?
Yeah, it was 238, and we, 23 actually leased up.
So, did we ever get compensated for the other?
Just 23.
Just the 23, despite all the work that we put in with that?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Sally. One question. Every time housing comes up, I look for various conflicts, and in this, there's one document that says approving this plan would assign a one preference point to Home TBRA. So, does that mean I should abstain from this?
No, you shouldn't because it has nothing to do with...
The home funding?
The home, right, the home development funding at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Right question. Hadn't thought of it.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that led me to another question. So, that one point extra, that would still mean that any of these vouchers, if you are actually homeless, you would be moved to the front of the line in regards, or more likely to be moved to the front of the line in regards to receiving any vouchers?
Right, so that's what a preference point does. So, we have other, we do have other preference, we have the residency preference, we have displaced... displaced by government action preference. Those are, that go really across the spectrum for even general applicants. Under the homeless preference, or now what I'm proposing to say, the limited referral-based preference, you get an extra point that pops people to the top of the list. In a lot of that feedback, and you saw it on multiple questions, where it was said, they want us to reinstate the ability to refer people that aren't the Move On. Well, the plan didn't restrict that. That was still included in the plan, was the ability for referrals to be received from people who are literally homeless, just needing that, have to have, you know, case management commitment, have to fill out the documents, and have a unit identified. So it is still, and that was, you know, we thought about that, and you know, the other one is, you know, this request to have the referrals come from coordinated entry. Well, that causes a challenge because it actually puts more burden, and it limits our ability to address someone who may not be chronically homeless or the priority of the COC, because the COC's priority, and I get it, is to address those who are most in need, right? And so, but the problem is, when we're only concentrating on the top 10 or 20 on the list, that means we're just waiting for all the hundreds behind them to become homeless long enough or sick enough to become chronically homeless so we can focus on them. We want to make sure we have an available resource. If someone has the appropriate level of case management, which was also brought up, we don't define that. To be stably housed, we want to be able to move as many people out of homelessness, whether they're super chronic and at the top or not. And that's why we want to make sure that we have that flexibility in place. Each individual's needs for case management are different. It could be six weeks, it could be six years. Every person we're addressing has different needs and a different level of case management, and we don't even pretend to try and set that, right? That is up to their case manager to determine.
So how long would you have to be technically homeless to qualify for the voucher under what we currently have?
Well, they would have to be homeless, confirmed homeless by one of the agency providers who get the CAS and consent forms, get them entered into the HMIS system, and conduct the assessment to be placed on the community queue, which means that's the by-name list, the list of known persons experiencing homelessness in our community. Right now, that's the level that we set. We verify that's where they are.
So they could be homeless for a month and beyond there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I know there are some standards of where it's like a year before you're eligible for certain.
Well, that's the chronic homeless. So in order to be chronically homeless, you have to have a year's worth of homelessness, right? It can be, it can be broken up, it can be four episodes in the last two years, and have a disabling condition. And a lot of our programs do focus on those who are chronically homeless, and trust me, my heart is there. We want to be able to help those who are chronically homeless, but I can't, we can't do it at the detriment of just waiting for others to become chronic before we have resources to assist.
Okay, so what other programs are you talking, does that include other vouchers as well?
It includes the COC-funded, the programs that receive funding directly from HUD under the continuum of care. So those are permanent supportive housing programs. We also have them internally. So our Housing First program, which started out just as the city and the county funded program to provide rent and utility assistance for people who are chronically homeless. We expanded that. We applied for COC funding because we identified we had a lack of case management, right? And that we could leverage the voucher program to expand that from serving 64 individuals a year to 100, right? Because we can leverage those resources, bring in more case management under that COC program. That one still takes referrals from coordinated entry for people who are chronically homeless. But I'll tell you right now, we have 16 slots and no referrals. That's unfortunate, but we are bound to that because of the way that program is designed. There are other programs funded throughout our community under the COC, and that list of programs is actually on the Coalition's website of each of those programs that are designed specifically for permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless.
Okay, they get the additional point for being homeless. What's the score matrix? Is that one to 100?
So, yeah, they get one point for residency, they get 10 points if it's displaced by government action, right? That's to really move them to the top of the list because some things, we have never had invoke that. We haven't had a situation where the government has actually displaced folks like that. We have 10 points, actually, for the FYI from FSS to make sure that they're coming to the top. The Foster Youth to Independence Program, although a great program because there's a need, the regulation states you can only provide assistance for three years, and then you terminate them. I'm sorry, you take an 18 to 24-year-old who's come from the foster care system and say, get your life completely together in three years? It's a stretch. They've added a caveat that said, if you, if they're involved in the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, we can go five years, right? That referral is for, sometimes we can't convince them on day one, year one, to join FSS, right? We want to be able to let, continue the rent assistance if they're actively involved in the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, and that's that one, and it's just a different level. Where we're talking and where we're hearing pushback is there is an extra, so there's a homeless preference, there's an extra point, which would give them two points if they're the home TBRA or the Housing First Evolution referrals, because both of the, well, Housing First Evolution was designed, its COC application was designed to leverage those vouchers. Home TBRA, I don't want a bunch of people that we just house from encampments falling off because they can't get through the process to keep them stably housed. So they would then get two points.
So in the future, what are we going to do with encampment decommissioning? Are we looking to increase that in any future plans, depending on how these trials go?
This is, this is definitely a pilot. The other challenge is appropriations. So the House budget bill says eliminate home. Well, if it eliminates home, that's our only resource. If we see this to be greatly successful, we could come back in next year's annual action plan for the CD programs and say, do you want to add more money to this, potentially to this pot? Now, 1.7 million's more than an annual allocation. We only had enough to do that this year because the COVID slowed. We had way fewer developments happening, which we had found out of home, which caused us to have enough money to pool to be able to do this pilot program. We would have to cut the funding. If they came back and didn't eliminate home and just cut it, which is what I think they're going to do, if I had to guess, knock on wood, that's, you know, what's going to happen, we would then have to cut money from either the housing development program, like the Mennonite builds and the Habitat builds, things like that, or like the bigger rental builds, like we allocated funding for the Commonwealth Arc River Residences Project, or the Down Payment Assistance, it's got to come from somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question.
Yep.
Slide 202.
Yep.
Are this number of case managers or individuals served?
Individuals.
So the number comes out to be about 550-ish. Can you tell me where the remaining, I guess, individuals are?
I'd have to actually investigate that.
Also VA, okay, something's wrong here because VA on your slide shows 299. On our green sheet, VA shows nine.
Oh, actually, if you look on your sheet, it was weird how it printed. You'll see it says 29, and then the nines below it on the green sheet. It's like the margins, there was something strange with the margins. So it's 299, 299.
And Catholic Charities is 111, then?
Right.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions for Sally. We'll now open it up for public comment.
Steven Maud, 540, 5400, East 21st Street North. I really appreciate the work that she's doing there, and I think that's an incredible program. However, do have a couple of questions and concerns. I want to make sure that, as you mentioned, selling off the public housing, I want to make sure that there is a, that we're not selling too many of them to corporate entities or large-scale entities, large-scale real estate entities, as that's a problem across the United States right now, which is increasing the housing issue, where these companies are creating essentially monopolies in certain areas, or they're using subsidiaries to get around monopoly laws to then increase this issue, increasing their rent at an exponential rate, far beyond the essential need of the rent increase to match inflation or any pricing costs. And we need to ensure that we are not creating more issues for this community by allowing them to buy up these properties without locals partaking in this. Additionally, like she mentioned, there is a significant shortage of staffing, and I think additional funding being provided in some way for them to have that staffing they need to manage these cases. Like Councilmember Hoheisel mentioned, there's a significant lack of people being addressed as they need to be with those first 20 on the list being addressed. Personnel is just a huge problem across the board, and as we're seeing an increase of joblessness in general across the country, where now jobless people are, you know, outpacing the available jobs in the country, we need to create more available options, and so having some of those options can also help people in this program as well find something to work on. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. I believe most of the homes that we are selling are going for affordable housing programs or have affordable housing requirements with them. There are a chunk of houses that we are just putting on the market because they're so dilapidated that they're not even eligible for the investment that we put into many of these homes. Sally, you might touch on that just a little more. You're more in tune with that than I am.
Yes. About a half to, little over half of the units that have been sold have been sold under the Affordable Housing Fund or with other restrictions that require them to stay affordable for a period, depending on if it's rental or homeownership. Others have gone out on the open market. We're not seeing, because it's pretty interesting, it's about 50/50 owner-occupant versus LLC or, you know, some sort of other ownership. We actually provide a preference for owner-occupants in those sales, in that a 10% difference in the purchase bid. So we will decline a little bit more money from, you know, a proposer in order to get an owner-occupant in. So we're trying to be very thoughtful on how we make these units available in the public, trying to retain affordability as much as we can. And then we get to reinvest the proceeds into new affordable housing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask you that question just a little bit more so people kind of understand. In the consent agenda today, we passed nine homes that were sold either at or above the appraisal value. And again, those dollars come back to help more individuals that are needing that assistance, including the new build that will be at second light to provide affordable housing.
Correct.
So again, new units with wraparound services nearby. So I really appreciate what you're doing, being really good stewards of those dollars.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, almost afternoon. Brock Booker, for the record, 912 South San Pablo Lane. Just wanted to touch on a few things that were mentioned that were of concern. One was that the resident advisory hadn't met in a while. That's a concern. This is somewhat of what we see nationally is an emergency and needs to be treated as such. Are there any reserve funds that could go to alleviate the stress in the system? I get a lot of calls from seniors and veterans in the way of, of course, transit, but this is about housing. I've been in touch with people with Justice Together and that group, and they've talked a lot about a fund for housing in this way, and so we need further collaboration and a task force, perhaps. Something that I feel is needed in a task force would be that's not, how do I want to say, politically motivated. Many people have expertise, but we get caught up in the back and forth of who they were appointed by or through. So those are some things that I think that the city could look at in the future, hopefully. Thank you.
We'll continue with public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I will go ahead. Oh, do we have one more? Sorry.
Sorry, Mayor, I wasn't quick enough on the draw there. My name is Cole Schneiders. For the record, I live at 1707 South Mosley Street, District 3. Thank you, Council, for giving the chance to give public comment. For those of you that may not know me, I work for the Coalition in homelessness in Wichita, Sedgefield County, and we have mentioned a couple times up here by public staff and in the plan explicitly. So while I'm not representing the Coalition today because I don't have that authority, I'm speaking as a community member and someone who's in the mix with the Coalition Board. This, the Coalition is made up of nonprofits across the community, essentially the entire homeless services system, which includes the city of Wichita and the county government, and how we as a community are addressing homelessness. We, in addition to our 21 members, we also have a 19-person board, which includes Sally Stang, who did her job and did, and did not comment on the letter that we sent on behalf of the Coalition to this council. So she did her job, no worries there. I want to start by saying I'm very appreciative to the Wichita Housing Authority City Council for being so focused on helping us in homelessness. It is very, very unusual, when I talk to my colleagues in other communities, to have a public housing authority that A, plays a role in ending homelessness, B, even understands they have a place in ending homelessness, or C, even does things like the homeless preference program, forgot what we're calling it now, but that set aside a voucher just for folks experiencing homelessness. It is very, very rare, and so I do want to commend our Housing Authority for being, playing such an active role in helping us address homelessness. As mentioned in the staff presentation, the Coalition did submit a staff letter in the slides. It was mentioned that most of our changes or all of our comments were mostly typographical, non-substantive changes. Those were the comments that were accepted. We made several additional comments, again, on behalf of the full Coalition and all of our member agencies. These, these changes were really made in good faith. This is not a process the Coalition has engaged with in the past. We've just been grateful for the changes that the county council has made for us, but we were invited by housing staff and by them coming to our, one of our regular meetings to provide public comment on this plan. And so I wanted to just ensure that the council saw that we did issue public comment, and several of the comments that we made, in my personal opinion, were not addressed substantively. These suggestions included a removal of the special preference points for home TBRA, Housing First, clarifications on case management commitment requirements, which is often a barrier to some of our nonprofits for knowing, can I actually commit my case manager to partner with the city? Changes to improve lease-ups, which we know has been a sore point for the city and a sore point for me, my job's to end homelessness, not let it keep happening and let vouchers go to waste, by partnering with the coordinated entry system. Also, some of our changes include ensuring that the eligibility for moving on is not made so narrow that we aren't actually able to serve those people who the Coalition can't serve because of our federal guidelines. In particular, the population that would not be served is people with high needs that aren't chronically homeless, that the Coalition would normally fall back on the Housing Authority to use the homeless preference voucher for those folks and pair them with community case managers. Unfortunately, we know those folks are going to be high need. If we use the metric as described for the homeless moving on preference, that they need to have low or medium barrier access or case management needs, they're not going to be served. We're going to have people that we don't have any resource for, other than short-term rental assistance that, as Sally mentioned, sometimes if you just pay for someone's rent for six months, that doesn't mean they're going to stay in housing permanently. The through line really was, we wanted to make sure that Housing Authority, as well as the Coalition, was in dialogue. We are working together to make this program work for everyone. Unfortunately, just the nature of the timelines and HUD requiring public comment. public comment, dialogue is not really, uh, the nature of the beast. So, you know, it, it might just pass today as written. And we're going to be thankful for it passing as written. However, just an example of, as written, the, uh, I guess I'm almost out of time. So I will stop instead. Continue to speak. Thank you all.
Cole, I'll ask you one question. Um, I know that housing has done, uh, a lot regarding collaboration. And so I know that this has a limited timeframe because of the feedback that needs to come back within, uh, so many days. However, that door of communication is open, I believe. Um, so have those conversations not been had in the past? And you all now are considering these conversations? Because I believe that Sally has been at the table. So I'll get your perspective and then ask for Sally's perspective.
Sure, yeah. The city council, which the housing authority, has invited us to these tables. And many times, it hasn't been necessary for us to say anything because the city was doing the right thing. When we analyze our system, and that's my job for the Coalition, is to analyze and improve our system over time. Um, you know, I, we decided as a Coalition that we needed to make some suggestions for changes. Um, those were after conversations with Sally. Those were after conversations with, um, with our board, with other community members and stakeholders. So we have been part of the process. However, the public comment process, this is the first time we've engaged in that, at least since I've been with the Coalition for about four years now.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, serving on the board, every year I've opened it up to the board to say that the, the plan is published, we're accepting public comments. Aside from that, we actually have a standing bi-weekly meeting with the Coalition staff to talk through, because these are complicated programs. We run like 14 different ones that touch homelessness. They all have different rules, not necessarily ones that we invoke. Um, but we try to be as creative as we can with the funding that we have, um, so that we can have the biggest impact. And that can mean things can get a little bit challenging. Um, we actually met with the Coalition planning folks from United Way on the 18th of August before publishing the, the draft, to get their feedback before we even put the draft out on August 22nd. So yes, we try, and it is, it's always ongoing. I guarantee you, me and my staff have daily conversations with the COC members.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Cole, for coming up and, uh, chatting about this with, with us. Is your main point of contention simply, um, just adding the language that opens it up to people falling into homelessness as well as homelessness?
So that point was listed within the Coalition's letter. That was a misunderstanding on our part. Um, we met as providers after the city staff presented to us, and we mistakenly understood what was presented to us as a removal of the, if you're literally homeless, you can apply for a Section 8 voucher, misunderstanding on our part. And so it was addressed by the city, and we appreciate that they helped to clear that up for us.
Okay. Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further public comments, so I will close public comment and bring it back to the bench. I see none. Oh, Councilmember Hoheisel.
Sorry, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a quick comment. Um, I know one thing that is difficult, especially now, today's age, is communication with people, especially interested parties. So, um, hopefully in the future, we are able to communicate better and open up for dialogue before we're, you know, kind of under the gun here to pass a, a plan. So I do hope that we can look at ways to improve that process in the future.
With that, I'll add a couple of comments and just say thank you to the housing staff. Again, you're trying very hard to utilize these funds appropriately, but also maximize them so that you can help the most amount of individuals who are needing that assistance. And so I appreciate seeing all these collaborative partners, uh, the agencies that have case management. And I continue to, uh, share United Way's Resource Guide, which is available every new quarter. Uh, they share a one-pager. And for those that don't know where it's at, just Google United Way of the Plains 211, and you can see the updated list. I am very appreciative that this community has a lot of really giving people that support these nonprofits and continue to help those most in need, and then utilize federal dollars through housing to help individuals have that space. So with that, I will move that the Wichita Housing Authority Board close the combined public hearing on the Wichita Housing Authority 2026 Annual Agency Plan and 2026-2030 Capital Fund Program Five-Year Action Plan. Approve the plans and authorize the necessary signatures to certify the documents for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
DER 2024-14 City Council Policy Number Nine Update.
Hello, Scott Wedle from the Planning Department. So this is an item, as you heard, to consider proposed updates to the existing City Council Policy Number Nine. So the recommended action is that you approve the, uh, recommended Policy Number Nine changes. In terms of background, this item came about because of questions from elected officials about why cases generally considered not to be controversial were on the City Council agenda as non-consent items. Please note that there are two factors that largely guide where planning items are placed on the City Council agenda. Those are Policy Number Nine, and then the second one is the general practice that has evolved over time. Policy Number Nine was first adopted in 1986, which was a great year. I think we had Back to the Future. Um, it was most recently updated in 1996, so I believe that was also another great year. Um, so it's been almost 30 years since that's been addressed. In terms of the existing policy, it indicates the City Council does not hold public hearings on items that the MAPC has already held a public hearing for. It also specifies what information will be provided to the City Council as part of the agenda item, how the appeal process works, and how the CPO, which is now called DABs, uh, works. In terms of the current practice, uh, now our practice, again, it's not written down, it's just evolved over time, is that staff submit planning items, uh, for the, for the council's planning non-consent agenda if there are any protests submitted against the application and/or if the DAB and MAPC recommendations are different. In terms of review for this, uh, in November of last year, this topic was discussed at the City Council Workshop Meeting. In general, the impression that we had was that we were headed in the right direction with a few updates. The council consensus seemed to be that there was a preference to hear cases if one or more protests were submitted within 1,000 feet of the subject site. So with that in mind, uh, we went back and, uh, made some updates. So the recommended changes would make a number of, uh, updates to the policy. Here are some of those that are highlighted. I'm not going to read through those, but just want to make you aware. In addition, the recommended policy would also update which types of planning items are covered by the policy. And it would also clarify what constitutes a valid, valid appeal of an MAPC recommendation. The recommended updates would make it so that planning items covered by the policy would be placed on the City Council Consent Agenda unless one or more of the following would apply. And these are largely consistent with what, uh, is in the existing policy. In addition, I want to note that staff worked to incorporate the feedback from the council workshop. And by having, how we did it was by having the distance be the notification area. So instead of 1,000 feet, we use a distance that was already being calculated and associated with cases. This would allow staff to utilize that already identified distance in order to help to make the process more efficient and more easily understood. So again, the recommended action is that you would, uh, you would approve those updates. And just a quick note about process, that this is not a zoning item, so I would recommend that council accept public comments on it. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Questions for staff? I see none. We'll not open it up for public comment. We'll just keep it here.
Yes, yes, we do actually open it.
Oh, we do. Sorry. We'll open it up for public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Scott and JR and your team. I have been asking for this for a bit. Um, I'm excited to see these changes made. I think it'll just provide more consistency. Um, it'll make it easier. So, um, thank you for, for, you know, listening and, and working through some of my concerns. I'm sure other council members did too. So thank you for all your efforts on this.
With that, would you like to move this item, Councilmember Tuttle?
Thank you. I would very much appreciate the opportunity to do so. With that, I would enthusiastically move that the City Council approved the proposed changes to City Council Policy Number Nine.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Start with appointments. Any appointments, Councilmembers? I see none. We'll now move to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Hoheisel.
I will make this quick. Um, this Saturday at the Child Advocacy Center at 9:30 in the morning, uh, we will be having my district breakfast, the best breakfast in Wichita, which this week I will be cooking along with some of our firefighters. Um, but we will be discussing improvements at the Fallham Firefighter Memorial Park. Um, I invite anybody who wants to come down and have a good breakfast, come on down for a good discussion. Uh, we were out there, uh, Sunday, actually, for the firefighter memorial. Always a moving, um, a moving time whenever we see that and hear the names of the people who have ultimately paid the ultimate price for, um, taking care of us. So, uh, again, a shout out to all the firefighters out there, past and present for everything they do. And please come on down, and we'll discuss ways that we can properly honor them moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just wanted to highlight the firefighter memorial on Sunday and say to my colleague, I appreciate your efforts on the firefighter memorial park. And so far, so good.
I see no further comments. I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
I love it.
Okay. Motion passes five to two. Have a great week.